The purpose of the public hearing is for citizens' comments on Bill Number 2013-17, An Ordinance Number 812, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located at 515 Highway 96 North, owned by Edward Paquin and David Fuqua, doing business as B&amp;B Investments, as shown on Williamson County Tax Map 22, Parcel 163.0, from RS 40 to RS 20. Is there any public that is here to speak on this matter? I call for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing adjourned. Thank you for your attention. Good evening. I call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, September 5th, 2013. The first order of business is the prayer and the pledge. Those who would, please join us. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this crisp, cool day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can come and speak our minds. We thank you for the ways that we're able to take care of our community as we make decisions and move forward. Thank you for all the hearts and hands that are represented here, and may we have patience and kindness. Thank you for the opportunity for us to serve each other. We ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like for us to defer, I think we already discussed a little bit, the ordinance for the chicken to what point. Commissioner Johnson put a request, he's on the way, and he'd like to be part of that discussion.
At this time, if all the Commissioners are in favor, we'll move 7C to 7H. If the time is not adequate, we may move it into the end of new business. Any comments on that? Is all okay with that?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda, other than that alteration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is the citizens' comments. We have, citizens' comments will be limited to the first five citizens to sign this sheet, and there is a kind of a requirement of physically signing the sheet to where it is a timestamped basis. If you did not physically sign the sheet, I would like to see if there's others that would have been able to speak if you were not able to sign for multiple people. It's to deliver comments to the Board of Commissioners. Each citizen will be limited to three minutes to deliver his or her comments. Ms. Trina Stone? Please approach the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. When I was asked to speak to you tonight regarding the proposal to allow backyard chickens within the city limits of Fairview, I wondered what I would say. I believe speaking about a change in ordinance, law, or policy, one should be passionate about the subject. Somehow, I just can't get passionate about chickens. I personally don't want to own backyard chickens. That being said, I do believe and am passionate about being able to have chickens on my property if I want them. So for me, it's not about chickens. It's about my home, my land, and my rights on a plot of ground that I pay a bunch of money for every month and my taxes every year. Now, do I think there shouldn't be regulations on these types of things when homes are on postage-stamped sized lots? Absolutely. There has to be, otherwise our city would be ugly instead of beautiful Fairview, and I would be very upset because I choose to live here. Hens, which is what is being proposed by the backyard chickens, are not an issue. The proposal is not for chicken farms. Are they noisy? They don't make enough noise that a neighbor would even know that they were there unless they were being attacked. A barking dog is much more of a nuisance. Smell. We aren't talking about a pig farm. Some cow pastures smell worse, and so do the possums and the skunks that are killed on our highways and backroads every day. I've lived in Fairview since I was five years old. I wasn't even aware we couldn't have chickens until this came up. To me, this is a silly ordinance, just like the one that almost kept Taco Bell from coming. We native Fairviewans often complain, and we say that we are the redheaded stepchildren of Williamson County. Sometimes this is a true statement because of something that our county seat inflicts upon us. But sometimes it's because we make ourselves appear silly to the rest of the county and those surrounding us because we continue to uphold an ordinance that was written a long time ago and founded on misinformation. I ask that you vote to change this ordinance and allow backyard chickens. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello and good evening. My name is Leslie Staley. I've lived in Fairview all of my life, and I want to address the issue of allowing Fairview chickens, or Fairview citizens, to own backyard chickens. As you all know, there were some concerns brought to your meeting June 6th. I would like to address some of those concerns. The first concern was that chickens are messy and smelly. Chickens themselves do not smell. Their feces will smell just like any other animal, like dogs, cats, rabbits, et cetera. A four-pound laying hen produces .0035 cubic feet of manure per day. According to FDA, an average dog generates three-quarters of a pound of manure a day that cannot be used as fertilizer because of the harmful bacteria and parasites, hookworms, roundworms, and tapeworms that can infect humans. The second concern was that chickens carry diseases. Chickens do not carry diseases. In the U.S., there is no need at present to remove a flock of chickens because of concerns regarding avian influenza. H5N1 virus, avian flu, does not usually infect people, but since November 2003, nearly 400 cases of human infection of the H5N1 viruses have been reported by more than a dozen countries in Asia, Africa, the Pacific, and Europe. H5N1 has never been detected among wild birds, domestic poultry, or people in the United States. Research shows that there are actually more diseases that can spread from dogs and cats than from chickens. Dogs and cats can spread parasites, bacteria, fungi, and viruses to humans. Rabies is an example of a viral infection that can be transmitted to people from the saliva or a bite from a dog. Cat scratch fever is a bacterial infection passed to people by cats. Each year, around 25,000 cases of ringworm are diagnosed in the U.S., a highly contagious fungal infection which can be transmitted to humans from touching an infected animal's fur or skin, and is common in cats that roam freely. Roundworm, hookworm, and tapeworm are intestinal parasites that can also be passed by pets to humans. There are also a number of tick-borne diseases that can be brought home from dogs and cats, like Lyme disease and Rocky Mountains spotted fever. Chickens can actually make your yard healthier because they eat ticks and insects. In fact, every year, my children get infections from tick bites in their heads, and this entire summer since we got our chickens, they never found one tick, we never found one chick on them, tick on them. However, since my chickens were banned because of the city ordinance, we now have found multiple ticks in just a week's time on my children. I'm asking you all to change the current ordinance of no backyard chickens. If Brentwood, Franklin, Spring Hill, and Thompson Station can have chickens, Fairview, the most rural of the cities in Williamson County, should be allowed to raise backyard chickens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Mr. Jim Powers?
Mayor, y'all already know where I stand on this, and I did not sign that thing. So if somebody else would like to speak, I would like to give my time to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir. Ms. Julie Thomas? Good evening. Welcome.
My name is Julie Thomas. I am in the county, but I have a letter from a local veterinarian who is a citizen of Fairview, and I wanted to know if I would be allowed to read it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. "To whom it may concern, the city of Fairview should allow backyard chickens to be kept by city residents. In considering this change, several objections have been raised. A few have falsely claimed that chickens pose a health hazard, that they will be a nuisance to neighbors, and they will diminish the appearance of neighborhoods. These statements are all inaccurate based on opinions rather on facts. Number one, health hazard. The main disease that most people think about is salmonella. While you can get salmonella from chickens, you can also get it from cats, dogs, hamsters, guinea pigs, frogs, toads, and even other people. The simple practice of good hygiene essentially eliminates this risk. The UT Extension Service offers a 4-H chick chain project. The UT Extension actually gives children the chicks to raise. Children are eligible starting in the fifth grade. It can be concluded that UT does not see chickens as a significant health hazard if it is giving chicks to children. Number two, nuisance. Chickens in general are fairly quiet animals. Roosters can be noisy, but that problem can be eliminated by only allowing hens to be kept. Chickens also don't make noise at night when roosting. The neighbor's barking dog roaming around is far more likely to be disruptive rather than a few chickens, yet we don't hear people calling for dogs to be banned from the city limits. Number three, diminished appearance of neighborhoods. Well-kept chickens maintained in a coop are not an eyesore. Chicken coops are generally simple in design, low cost to build, and many, and most chicken owners are capable of producing a nice-looking coop with minimal materials and costs. The city could include wording in the ordinance to provide for chicken coops to be constructed to certain reasonable standards. Also, those very few individuals that really think property values will decrease because of a few chickens in the neighbor's backyard, they have other options, such as neighborhood associations, to prevent them from having chickens as neighbors. As a large animal veterinarian, I visit many farms, and a significant portion of these farms have chickens. They are in general well-kept, the coop is well-maintained, and people are not getting sick from their chickens. Many of these farms include small children, and often one of their chores is to gather the eggs and feed the chickens, yet they do not get sick from them. The chickens are a pleasant addition rather than a hazard or an eyesore. With the ordinance for allowing backyard chickens, some regulations would need to be included to help guide in making sure chickens are a pleasant addition. The number of chickens kept can be determined by lot size. For small lots, four to six chickens have been suggested by other cities that have had this topic arise and agreed to backyard chickens. For people with larger lots, more chickens could be kept, but a limit still should be set. No roosters should be allowed to be kept. We live in a rural community, one that has traditionally embraced agriculture. Even though Fairview is growing and changing, we should not lose perspective of those agricultural roots. They are part of what makes Fairview its unique nature that appeals to people. Neighboring cities, including Nashville, have had this topic. Does that mean? Okay. And I just want to tell you, it was Jamie Woodard, and she is a doctor of veterinary medicine.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good afternoon. This, everyone knows all the facts. We've heard the facts about chickens, so I'm not up here to present more facts. I'm just up here to pretty much just say the reason I want chickens. This is America, the land of the free. We should not be denied the pets of our choosing on our own private property for which we pay taxes. Other citizens in major cities around the country and in Tennessee have chicken-keeping ordinances. Why not us? Building codes does not need to be involved. A backyard chicken is a pet, like a dog or a cat. Coops are to be considered just like a doghouse. Who will police the chickens? The Williamson County Animal Control should be the ones to take care of a nuisance. This will leave the city of Fairview out of the loop unless tax dollars spent on policing the chickens. Why do I want chickens? My child is allergic to egg whites. I have chickens that lay extra-large, hormone-free eggs. I can fry them up and peel off the egg white, and then she can eat the yolk. She loves the yolk. I also want to make sure that I can keep as many hormones out of her food as possible as she takes a few medications. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, we've had four people that have spoken.
The next person that asked to sign up was, if you'd like to speak, state your name.
That's fine. Yeah.
And then there was one after, but that would be the last of the fifth, so please state your name.
Victoria Florentes.
Thank you. Welcome.
My husband and I still oppose ordinance 807 allowing chickens in residential areas, and it undermines the long-term vision of Fairview. As I stated before, chickens are not domesticated animals and carry disease that should be monitored by a health department. Since Fairview does not have one, you are asking the people of Fairview to monitor and control the droppings, smell, and everything else that can be dangerous to the people of Fairview. This also puts additional work on the Codes Department in policing chickens. It is not cost-effective to add additional resources to police chickens. Our tax dollars should be used more wisely. Your vote to go along with this ordinance is a bad decision for the citizens of Fairview. Now, as far as the subdivisions go, you missed my point the last time. We have a covenant that forbids poultry, farm animals, et cetera. If someone decides to have chickens or any other farm animals, the city will require the homeowner to have them removed based on the current codes, city codes. All we are asking is that the codes remain as-is. It works, so why do you want to change it? We are not asking you to enforce or override our covenant, just apply the current city code which does not allow chickens in the city of Fairview. As far as new people moving into Fairview, they want to raise chicken. They can buy a home, or a farm, or a property that is large enough to accommodate poultry and is allowed based on the current city codes. This ordinance is bad for the city, and I again urge you to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's our five citizens' comments. We appreciate everyone's interest. Moving on to item number four is awards and recognitions.
Mayor, there are no staff awards or recognitions this evening.
Any from the Board? The only, I guess, we'll hold public announcements. Number five, public announcements. Any from the staff?
Yes, ma'am. Just want to remind everyone of the emissions testing beginning finally on Monday, the 9th. It'll start at 7:30 to 12:00. We're adding that day to Monday and Tuesday now, so just a reminder there. Also, the Williamson County Animal Control and Adoption Center will be holding a community rabies clinic here at City Hall on Saturday. That's 1 o'clock from 1:00 to 3:00. The cost is $10 for your rabies shot.
All right. I have a notice from the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation, and it's with great pleasure to invite you to support with millions of students and schools around the world in walking and biking to school. Communities of over 40 countries will celebrate International Walk to School Day on October 9th. October 9th, Tennessee will join with over 3 million participants during the grand occasion. If you have an interest to register for the event or to find out more resources and tools, that website is www.walkbiketoschool.org. That's October 9th. I'd also like to announce that our Congressman Marcia Blackburn will be present in the Fairview area meeting and greeting. That will be at 7:30 tomorrow morning at Hickory Home, and if you are interested, that is at Hickory Home at 7:30 in the morning. Also want to highlight, our 29th Annual Nature Fest is coming Saturday, the 14th, to Bowie Nature Park, and it is an all-day event, 10 to 4, I believe, and there is something for everyone. If you have not been before, you've missed it. If you've been before, hopefully you will return and bring family and friends. They're also still taking for sponsorship. They're also still taking, if you're interested, in vendor booths. You can call the Chamber of Commerce at 799-9290. They'll be glad to help you with applications, or their website is fairviewchamber.org. And last, I'd like to highlight that the Fairview Economic Task Force will be making a road trip on Wednesday and Thursday of next week. We have four delegates going to the Kentucky-Tennessee Idea Exchange, and that is a retail and commercial development exchange between the southeast area and Fairview will be represented by the Economic Task Force, bringing marketing material, speaking with key contacts of future retail potentials, and also talking to several that have already invested in our community, and I won't name them because I'll miss some out, but several of the new persons and businesses over the last three years will be present soliciting into small communities. So we want to thank them for investing in Fairview, and we also want to talk to a few new people to be able to share with them the economic development opportunities that Fairview shares. Are there any other public announcements from the Board? Moving on to approval of minutes. We have several of the minutes for the July 23rd, 2013 Special Called Mayor's Meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second is the minutes, sorry, did you say second? Seconds is the minutes from August 1st, 2013, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Move to approve.
We have a first and a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the minutes for the August 15th public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second. First and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the minutes for the August 15th Board of Commissioners meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. I have one typo on E. Ms. Teresa? You'll look at E.
7E.
Oh, I'm sorry. A number E, huh? There's a number E. Yes, ma'am. 7E at the very last sentence. The quote is roughly 1,400. Kevin, I believe I wrote down 14,000. Can you make a verification on that on the bid that was received for the forestry project?
It's just under 15,000.
Okay. At that point, if you can get the exact number and make those moment minute changes, please. Any other additions or deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And last is the August 15th Board of Commissioners Special Called Meeting.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to 7O Business. We have second and final reading on Bill 2013-17, Ordinance Number 812, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located at 515 Highway 96 North, owned by Edward Paquin. The ordinance to cha, I'm sorry, Edward Paquin and David Fuqua, stopped in the middle of the sentence, doing business as B&amp;B Investments, as shown on Tax Map 22, Parcel 163.0, from RS 40 to RS 20. Ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located at 515 Highway 96, owned by Edwin Paquin and David Fuqua, doing business as B&amp;B Investments, shown on Williamson County Tax Map 22, Parcel 163, from RS 40 to RS 20. What are the wishes of the Board?
Are they present?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
First and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 7B is second and final reading on Bill 2013-18. An ordinance for an amendment to the city of Fairview, Tennessee, budget for fiscal year 2013-14 budget.
Move to approve.
First and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 3 is discuss and, who came in?
He's, he's here. I saw him.
Item number 7C, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2013-12. An ordinance to add chickens, add Chapter 3, Section 13-301, Keeping of Chickens to Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control of the Municipal Code of the City of Fairview of Tennessee.
Move to approve. Discussion.
Second. We have a first and second discussion.
You need just a second. Vice Mayor, if you're settled.
I do, just for discussion, for the Board to comment if they would, on number 11, it talks about any of the maintaining, cleaning, and control, and the permit holder must remove waste on a regular basis, at least biweekly, dispose in a proper manner. My question there is the word compost, would that be something that can be added there for the discussion of composting? Any comments?
About the compost?
Yes, ma'am. It says it must be removed from property. And my question is, composting is probably in the thought process.
Of why they would want them in the first place, not to remove it, to use it in their own home garden, I imagine.
Gardening and such, yes. So my question there is, could it be, or composted? Because to leave that in there, the must remove, then the compost is not allowed, and I think that is a necessity if they're looking to do that for their gardening. Looking for your comments.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, if you're changing the wording to compost, yes.
Must remove or compost? Because it says dispose of in a proper manner. At that point, do we have rules and list of what that proper manner is?
What do we have on the books for what you have to do with?
Dog?
Dog poo.
Nothing.
Nothing. And do we have anything that issues a permit to build a doghouse or have a doghouse? Why in the world would the city go out and inspect anything for this if we're not going to do it for dogs?
My note is dogs, domestic pets, rabbits, cats, question mark. So yes, I have the same question on number eight. And again, this is a rough draft document that's been drawn up, and it is here for us to amend, for us to address, and for us to discuss where we would like to go with this next.
I would be fine with completely striking number eight in the fee. We're not going to charge to have a dog, so I don't, can't imagine charging to have a chicken.
Another thing in one of the other ordinances read, it did say no domesticated hens can be trained or used for the purpose of fighting amusement or sports, and I think that added would be just something that's not in this particular ordinance?
Should be added.
Should be added, I agree. I'm going to get to a recommendation of an amendment here is what I'm asking. And to ask your question, Vice Mayor, on number 13, my question to Codes would be, what, is this citation process the one that's used in any and all citations, or is this a specialty citation process? Does anyone know?
Did anybody hear from Codes tonight?
That's what I'm worried.
Would one of you be wanting to speak on what is the citation process? Just say someone called, and it's a screaming cat, or it's a dungards or whatever.
When they issue a citation, you can issue it in person, or they can, they can mail the citation.
Okay, so that's the same process?
Yeah, it's basically the same.
Okay, that's all I wanted to confirm.
I won't say it's word for word, but it's basically the same thing.
And the other was, the citations, I guess the other one was the violation, citations issued for the violation. Is that the same process of any other violation in the city of Fairview that the Codes Department processes? That's the bottom of 13, please.
I think that's correct. There would be, there's a time limit on the, on the citations. It may not be exactly this time limit. For example, if you have a hearing on, on grass, it can't be less than 10 days. But there's, there's a reason for that involving, I mean, you can have, you can have different time limits, but there's always a time limit. You have to have a hearing, and that hearing has to satisfy a fundamental due process. And the, the hearing that they have, if they have an administrative hearing with Codes official, would have to come before a citation would be issued to appear in court.
Okay. On section 13, I'm going to ask you, as we address that section, if it's any different than any other process or any other citation that the Codes Department, that it be mirrored to be exactly the same as any other citation in the city of Fairview process? Fees, timing, anything? Is what I'm addressing on 13.
The fees, for example, can't exceed $50. That's true on all citations.
All things, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I did not have anything to verify, so that's why I was trying to clarify that it wasn't a new process because of this.
No, state, state law requires that a municipal ordinance violation cannot exceed $50. Now, it can be less than that, that's just whatever the judge decides, that's his discretion. It could be 10 bucks. It could be ten bucks, twenty bucks, but it can't be more than fifty.
Okay, and section 10 goes back to what you were addressing on number eight. Is that something that the permanent screening buffer shall be required and plants approved by the codes? I bet you there's many neighbors that wish there were buffers from other animals in the backyard of people's homes.
There, there are not, uh, there's not a requirement for buffers for other animals. I mean, of course, obviously, and on the ones that qualify for horses, there's obviously a fence. But there's not one that requires a buffer.
Okay, and other than the size of the land, I'm going to turn the floor over to other commissioners that want to speak.
Well, I mean, it's one of those things, as we talked about in the last meeting. I feel like it's somewhere of all these other cities, um, have an ordinance. There has to be a happy medium where, um, yes, we're not saying run wild, but also something that, um, we can live with. I agree, we're a rural community and, um, that a lot of people come out here for that. And so, anyway, I think there's kind of a happy medium. Now, what that is, is, you know, up for us to decide. But, um, you know, we go from nothing, I mean, to five acres to zero. And, um, I would like us to maybe discuss what would be, um, appropriate.
I'd like to see us consider three quarters of an acre. And that's not going to make everybody happy, because some people have less than that that want one. But that will eliminate a lot of the, uh, discussion that we're going to have as far as quarter acres, which people are a lot closer together and that type of thing. I'd just like to see us entertain that as part of the regulation, because it's really not posted in there, what area that we're looking at. Even if it's set, I'm not saying that that would sway my vote one way or the other. But I think in all fairness to some of the communities and places that we have, that would, in most every case, not disallow anybody that now has them in the city, that now has them, because they were, had to be grandfathered in. So the newer subdivisions are probably going to be smaller, I don't know. But that's somewhere to start, my vote.
Well, and I will comment, I appreciate, um, everybody's, um, comments. And, uh, you know, I really listened to the, you know, about our property, it's, you know, and our rights. And I know to a lot of people it comes down to whether chickens are not chi- chickens, but it comes down to, you know, government getting involved. But that goes both ways in some factor. I mean, I do think that a lot of time, you know, as citizens and people, we feel like the government has too much say. But in some factor, there's a lot of ordinance and rules were set in place, because to live together, we needed, um, to have laws. And so, I take that in consideration. But I tend to believe that, um, that just, I will say those that spoke on that, it really made me stop and think, is this, you know, somebody, we're actually saying what kind of animal you can have on your property? So that really kind of, I don't know, it makes me kind of stop and think, you know, maybe, or should we? You know, what's the fine line? But I do realize that we have a lot of subdivisions in, um, Fairview now. And, um, even though I know that they will have covenant, um, and hopefully that will help enforce that. But, you know, what's too close? So that's kind of where I'm thinking. So I'm up for any, um, discussion and what the other commissioners are kind of leaning towards.
Larry, number nine, did you come up with that on your own? Or did you take that from another city's ordinance? Or were you instructed by one of us for that?
No, I wasn't instructed, I discussed this with, with the codes director. This is typical of permits that, that you normally see. If I own the property and you buy it, you're going to have to come and get another permit. Uh, we don't normally transfer permits from one owner to another.
No, but we do, and if it's grandfathered in, right? As long as they take action.
Something's grandfathered in, you don't have to have a permit.
Well, if it's been longer than, what, you do?
Well, if it's been longer, that if it's been continuously unused for thirty consecutive months, then you're no longer grandfathered in. You've got to comply with the ordinance as it is.
I mean, that's a good question.
I mean, that's just, that's just more unnecessary word. I didn't, here, here's a, here's a, here's a, here's a question. The very first line, it says that they must own and occupy. If somebody rents three acres in the city, they can have a horse on it. Would you say that's a true statement or a false statement? Or do we say only owners can have these things, somebody that's renting a space can't?
No, that's, uh, if, if you, if you rent the property, you can, you can have a horse on it. And you could change this where if someone rents the property, they can have it. But I think you should have it, if you want to change it to where you rent, I think you should have to occupy the property. That would keep someone from renting some property and just putting chickens on it and nobody lives there. Because we run into that with grass cutting. I mean, they didn't rent it just to put the grass on there, but you, you, you've got that situation, everybody moved out. I wouldn't, I mean, if, if you want to allow people that rent the property to have it like everybody else, I don't have a problem with that. But I think you would want to leave in there that you occupy the property. We put rent or own. That's not any problem.
Would reside not take care of both of them? On the property?
Well, it depends if you look at the legal, uh, description of, of reside. If you occupy is I've got to be there. Uh, I can have a residence here and a residence somewhere else, but I'm not occupying the property.
How about own or occupy?
Instead of an, make it or?
We could do that.
That's, puts both on the same stick.
We put in there rent, uh, or own.
But it may all go away if we eliminate number eight. Which I don't think there's any. We're not going to, we're not going to charge to have a dog, why would we charge it? That's what I don't understand.
If you, if you eliminate, uh, number eight, you would eliminate it by implication, number nine.
Correct.
So if you strike eight, you strike nine also.
Now, I do realize, and of course without asking, some of the, reading some of the other cities, a lot of cities do have, um, application fees and they do have, um, um, best permits. But, um, I'm not really sure if it's necessary. But I don't know if that was something y'all took maybe from some of the other cities that was looking at.
The big reason for having permits is so that you can, uh, this is a, a zoning ordinance. And if you're going to have a zoning ordinance, it sometimes can be imperative that you're able to document who and when they got, they obtained whatever's there. Not only chickens, but anything else. Because for something Commissioner Sutton mentioned, the grandfathering statute or, uh, the statute relating to, uh, prior existing non-conforming uses states that if you abandon that use, and to abandon it by definition in the statute is continuous non, uh, existence on that property of that use for thirty consecutive months. And the only way, well, it won't be the only way, but a convenient way to determine if somebody has had a specific thing on there for thirty months is check your permit records. If you've been there without a permit, you're in violation. Then it's pretty easy. And that sometimes can be vital, because the burden of proof for any type of ordinance, if, if use of the ordinance is upon the person claiming use under the ordinance. And if you, for example, said, I have been here for thirty consecutive months and the city thinks you haven't, the burden's on you to establish you have not abandoned it for thirty consecutive months. If you chose to ignore the ordinance and if you had to take some type of further action, i.e. in chance record for an injunction to prohibit you from violating the ordinance, then the burden shifts to the city. And if you can't establish that, and one way to establish that is, is permits. But, you know, whether, if, if the board doesn't want to have permits, then that's, that's fine. It's just a matter of striking it off the, the ordinance.
Vice Mayor, is it more about the fee or more in your thought process about just having to register your animals?
I would say both. It would definitely be both. I don't, I don't know why you would register them at all. As long as you complied, then there wouldn't be any, any issues or any need for codes department and/or Williamson County Animal Control to, uh, to be involved there. Now, if, if there are problems, then I guess we would do what we needed to do, or the county would do what they need to do through animal control. But if none of this is required for dogs, I can't see it required for chickens. And I didn't get to hear citizens' comments from being late, but I've had many people call me and say that basically chickens don't make any noise at night and dogs, certain dogs, some dogs, not all dogs, bark all night and keep neighbors up and disturb them. And so, I mean, I don't, I can't imagine any of this being done. The application fees, I just think that's a, a waste of the city's time. For fifty dollars, it's probably going to cost the city more in having to do this and the paperwork and go out and do inspections and whatnot. It just, it makes no sense to me. And I guess if eight was eliminated, that would not only eliminate nine, but it would eliminate number 12.
Ten and twelve. Oh, no. Well, yeah, ten because of those.
And number 10, I was going to, I was going to discuss that as well. Larry, do you know, do we have any, uh, this talks of permanent screening buffer. Do we have that required for doghouses in people's backyards?
No, sir.
I don't know that it's a ridiculous request, though.
Well, part of it is a value like the last sentence? In a manner to hide the, the structure? Or it would just be the public right of way and adjacent property owners? Which is what the, I think the matter is. How would you rewrite where the codes is not there?
Yeah, and like going back to dogs, which were mentioned, we require them to either be fenced or on a leash. So, I mean, I think for that would be something that would be necessary to still stay in.
I've got two other questions for you to think about. Would it be advan- advantageous to put what is permissible or what is prohibited in the keeping under number three? As far as the districts? Davidson County ordinance reads the prohibited, not the permissible. Just wanted to see if there was any discussion or comments on that.
As far as the enforcement of it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't really matter, because if, if it's permissible or prohibited, you look at it and say, okay, if it's permissible, they're in this district. If it's prohibited and it's not listed here, then you, then you can have it. So just whatever the, the board desired.
Because when it was first presented, we had a lengthy discussion about the different types of zoning and the diff- different districts. And it was discussed that a certain size of land and below would not be prohibited. Multi-family would not be permissible, I'm sorry, I said the wrong thing. Permissible, and the town center was not permissible.
The, the town center is still prohibited.
Okay, am I missing something? If we have a certain amount of land below and the multi-family and the town center? Am I missing something else that would be prohibited?
We were instructed to include, uh, specific, uh, not less than such and such sizes. And I got with Don, and these were the zonings that fit that size.
Yes, sir. And, and we may have to go back and get what fits that size. But in lay terms, I'm thinking, would it, would it make a difference? Does the board have comments of whether you say what's permissible or what is prohibited?
Oh, I think so. I, I, we don't want to have two hundred chicken coops in park buildings. We don't want to have, you've got duplexes, you know, you start adding duplexes up. I think it, it makes a big difference in the lot size that we're going to have. And I think it should be structured as lot size. There's probably a lot of people in this room that don't know what their R40 or what, what they really are.
Right.
So in discussion, in all fairness, then we should look at, at a measurement of an acre, quarter acre, whatever square footage is inside that area, uh, that we look at. So I think that needs to be discussed in.
I think both of them are valuable, one for layman's term and one, because if you're reading the ordinance to follow it, you want to know what it says.
Exactly.
And then if you call the land a certain thing by codes, then it can be stated that way also.
If I rezoned it, it could be, become, you can use it. And if I don't rezon it, you don't. So it does, it doesn't say anything about the size of property that we're discussing. And that's going to determine the number of chickens that we allow and everything else.
I think it's easier to understand if lot size was, um, mentioned for the same reasons as y'all were saying, the, you know, the codes, and not everybody's going to know the codes. And to make it simple.
But you'd have, you'd have a lot size, a quarter, a half, three quarters, and you could define it with the square footage inside those, those areas, rather than what they're zoned at.
Right. The multi-family.
It's apparent we're not ready to vote on, uh, final vote on the subject, so. A lot of work still to be done.
We're in discussion.
Well, Commissioner Sutton, uh, mentioned a lot size. Does anybody else have, um, thoughts?
I'm okay with what he said. Around point seven, three quarters, point seven five. Other discussion?
If that was done, that would eliminate one, two, three, four of the six zonings that were proposed this evening. The two agriculture zonings don't count, because they can have.
They're agricultural already.
But you've got RSM40 and RS40 would be the only two that would qualify out of those.
That's what we, I think, originally had.
I, I agree, yeah. I, I really, I thought we already had it down, till we were voting on number three as it was written. But now we're going to talk as excluding four different zonings from that. And that's what we talked about at the last meeting.
Well, at the last meeting.
I just recall us pulling things out and discussing what couldn't be. And then these are the ones that could, and never did we rediscuss that to say maybe some was not, is how I recall it.
I would be fine with R20 and above.
And in layman's term, your lot size to that, sir?
That would be, that would be half, half acre.
Twenty thousand square feet and above?
Correct, yes, sir.
And above?
Correct.
What's the average size?
Excluding multi-family and still the town center overlay district.
I think it's too small.
What's the average size of a subdivision lot now?
Less than half an acre.
So we only have three subdivisions that are less than half an acre in Fairview, Leverett Meadows, um, Fernvale Heights, and, um, Evergreen Acres.
Everything else above?
Half acre to three quarter acre. Your older subdivisions and your larger neighborhoods that were originally septic, that changed over in 91 to sewer, is three quarter to one and a half. And then, of course, you have larger throughout. And that's just a brush answer to what you're asking.
So if you're in one of the newer subdivisions and you have a corner lot, you may qualify, but your neighbors on both sides may not. If we did three quarter. But if you did half, everybody in those subdivisions.
You could have remain demand subdivisions that have lots that are up to one and a half acres, that everything else is half. Yes, sir. But the subdivision covenants would be the place that you would have the opportunity, or have that they are or they are not permissible, no matter what the land size would be. And we do not enforce the covenant, so at that point, it would be, that's the purchase where, that's the, the rules of where you purchase. Then you have two subdivisions with homeowners association, Kingwood and Poston don't have it. So, really only one. And, and the met as a fair view, if you want to call that, but that's multifamily. So, those are the only ones with active homeowners that, you know, have an active association. The others would be covenant restrictions.
What would be the average lot size for Castleberry?
I would say half, but there probably is some point seven fives, and even larger in some of the back remainder man lots.
What about?
When I say remainder man, that you get to a subdivision and the cul-de-sac, and you have this big lot versus all the others the same size.
What about McCormick Grove?
Half to one, maybe. Especially on that back side in phase two, could even go into more than one, but I don't, I'm not sure. But they have covenant restrictions, so they wouldn't be allowed, no matter what size of land is. Covenant restrictions, it says no fowl, no poultry.
What about, uh, the one on King Road, Braxton Bend?
Half acre to one and a half. But they have covenant restrictions, and they wouldn't allow poultry or fowl.
Well, it sounds to me like it would be very reasonable to just say half acre then, and then the, the restrictions take care of everything else. If the majority of the subdivisions are set on half acre and above, why would we not set this rule on half acre and above? If the, everything else is going to be taken care of on that end anyway, that makes logical sense.
I don't have a preference. I have been between a half acre and one acre, and asking the public, every person I could ask, of what's fair, what's reasonable. Because I believe in the city of Fairview, being told you cannot have a chicken, and your child is in a four H project, and you live on fifteen acres, I believe that's a full pendulum to why. You know, you live in an apartment, and your child is in a four H project, you, you can't have a chicken, it's understood.
Right.
So, I, I try to, as Commissioner Carroll said, what's fair? Where would the board like to go here? We're in discussion? We've made some alterations, we've made some additions and some deletions. Would we like to ask the attorney to make the address changes? Would we like to have some?
Since this, since this is first reading, I say someone just make a motion with the changes, and he can have it redrawn and brought to us for second reading.
Okay.
I'd have to, it could be redrawn for the second reading. The second reading couldn't be until after the next meeting, because this is a zoning ordinance and must have a public hearing. And you couldn't have it at the next one, because you could have it more than fourteen days, at least fourteen days plus.
When you make the change, I'd like to have an option in there, if possible, between half and three quarter acre.
What do you want to go? Everything above half acre, because you've got some that are, what I'm hearing, an acre, acre and a half, you're not going to prohibit those.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be my motion, is everything above half acre and above.
And actually, that would be R twenty and above, because a half acre is a little over twenty thousand square feet, and R twenty is specifically twenty thousand square feet.
And subdivisions evidently aren't going to be in question, because they're not going to be allowed to have any, anywhere. But there are people that have half acre lots that don't live in subdivisions.
Right. The first provision of the ordinance says, and we couldn't do that anyway, that this ordinance doesn't apply to entities that have covenant restrictions or homeowners associations, because we don't enforce those. That's an enforcement duty for the people who live in those areas that have them, but, and we would not enforce those unless they violated the, the city ordinance. But we would not in, in any way interfere with what they have on the covenant restrictions or homeowners associations. But I, I can, it'd be a simple matter to revise this, and I'll also go over again with Don and have it for the first meeting in, I guess, Octo-, uh, October.
And I want to have one more comment. There is a sunshine provision, I don't want to make confusion here, but there's a sunshine, sunset provision in one of the ordinance, and it is a time factor. The provision of this section pertaining to the keeping of chickens shall expire and be null and void upon, and this one was a twenty-four month period, unless extended by resolution of the council. So, my question, it's known as a sunset provision, is included to ensure that the effectiveness and necessity of this section is reviewed by the council after its adoption. Would we like to have a sunset provision with a time date or not?
Well, I say why not? I mean, it would, do we, I mean, I love that. Why wouldn't we look back over and say, is it working? You know?
Yeah, that's, I have no problem reviewing it.
I think that's.
I can, I can add a sunset.
Are you making all these notes, or do I have to give you my scribbles?
No, I've, I've, I've got my notes.
Okay.
Uh, I have a good memory, but I don't have that good a memory. Uh, I can add a sunset provision, all thing I need to know from the board is how long, how long? Twenty-four months, twelve months?
I'm okay with that.
I don't, it's no problem to me, whatever you want.
Did you also get the part of adding the, um, the addition I said about the domesticated? Cannot be trained or used for the purpose?
Uh, I did get that, about the, cannot be trained for fighting or violent purposes.
Uh, amusement or sports was the wording. And on number eleven, the must remove or compost?
I, I got that.
And?
I'm not sure that, I've never seen, this, this ordinance restricts it to the raising of hens. I've never, you might could train them, use them for sports.
You never know.
I never saw them trained to, to fight, but it's no problem to put it in there.
Some people could get real bored, Larry.
Yeah, I, I, it's no problem to put it in there. But if, if they're, if they're fighting these chickens, they've got some problems that's way beyond this ordinance.
Also, on third, on, order in the court. On number thirteen, did you also get my request of confirming that any and all, if, you know, someone calls in with a complaint, that the citations is exactly like any other complaint?
I did, and what I'll do is, is make that, uh, you can't, I'll have to take out the seventy-two hours and the ten days, because if you write a citation, it's going to be based upon the next court date.
Yes, sir.
So, we'll just adopt that to be, uh, the, the next available court date, but not less than, than seven days or something, because you've got to have some time in which, you need some time in which fairly dictates that, for you to respond. And if it's less than that seven days, you just have to go to the next court date. But yes, I've got that, and I, I will correct that to something that I think would be acceptable.
And strike eight, nine, and twelve?
Yes.
I never did get a definite date on the sunset provision. Twelve months, twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months.
Twenty-four. And strike eight, nine, and twelve.
And ten must be altered, because it speaks of codes oversight.
Eight, I'm sorry, eight, strike eight?
Nine and twelve.
Nine and twelve, I've already got that.
And however y'all want number ten to read.
Ten's going to have to be altered. At least the, the last sentence is good, the first sentence either needs to be rearranged or omitted.
But you don't want the permanent buffer? Is that what the board's?
Something else.
It said by, codes and plants approved by the codes department.
So, that's all that needs to be.
Just number ten can just read, the screening buffer shall be installed around the entire keeping structure. Has, just remove the first sentence and keep the second sentence.
Yeah, because it does need to be out of right of way and not nuisance to the neighbors.
On number ten, you just want the permanent screening buffer, maybe a fence, rubber, approved by the codes department, and then leave the last sentence alone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I got it.
So, do we have an amendment to the motion of acceptance of the ordinance? Make a motion for amendment?
Second.
As written and attorney made, seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And at that point, that negates being accepted, the first motion? Because we approved the motion.
It's, this is first reading.
Okay.
It's approved in the first reading, and I, it's fully amendable up until the second reading, and the second reading will be the first meeting in October, because I will also bring to the next meeting in this month, which would be what?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Yes, sir.
A resolution to set a public hearing for that night.
Okay. So, we have the motion and the second, as amended, approved. The original motion was for the approval with the amendments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thanks, everyone, for their attention and comments. We're moving on to seven D. Discuss and or take action on school donations from the school facility tax fund. It's, um, my honor to announce to the public that the Board of Commissioners have discussed the opportunity ahead of supporting our public schools. In the discussion that we had, is working through the school facility tax, we discussed a certain amount per child. That's been verified of the enrollment as of August fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen of all four of the public schools, and the agreed-upon amount in discussion was forty dollars per student. What are the wishes of the board?
Second.
We have a first and a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the numbers that were verified was the total number of students as of August fifteenth was two thousand, two hundred and thirty, and that will be verified again, and city manager is dealing with the, um, the schools for the corrected enrollment. Okay? Digress there. E is discuss and or take action on city hall exterior improvements plan of action. The reason I brought that is because we also discussed in a workshop, the Board of Commissioners, that there was needs for our city hall to be, um, a few maintenance parts that needed to be done on city hall. And that was discussed of it being approximately ten thousand dollars. And in the discussion of board, we did decide that where that money is in the budget needs to be moved forward, and we need a plan of action for the repairs that are needed. I want to make note of the, um, the Cornish area, that there's a rotten wood. Also, in that exterior conversation, would like to make note of the clock does not illuminate it used to. And the tower has not been illuminated, and it used to. So, those are my three points, but I'm sure there are either other points or conversations. So, at this point, I just wanted to get it to where the city manager had a plan of action for the benefits of moving forward on that project. Other statements from the board? Needs or comments?
I mean, if we need to do something.
Didn't know if anyone had any other parts that they wanted to address in that plan of action, because at this point, those are three things. Is there other things that need to be done?
Well, I would say the city staff would be there, city manager.
Anybody else?
I hope I didn't, not here, are we addressing the concrete on the front porch out here?
It's up to you.
I mean, is that big city? I think it needs big city.
Ten thousand will cover that, but.
Because it's just getting worse.
Because we got a quota of a little over nine thousand for the fascia and the guttering, you know, that repairs, so that money will not cover that sidewalk.
That's something, adding something to the top of that to keep it deteriorating.
We'll look at it and see.
And part of that water leak is coming down through there, too, so I don't want us to come into a bigger bill later on for it.
Right.
Is the gutter part of the leak part that's causing the rot part?
Think so.
Yes, um, city manager and I discussed this last budget year. Um, we didn't have any funding at that time to, to actually look into that. Um, I did talk to some local contractors, never procured an actual bid for it, but that's where we got the ballpark for the ten thousand dollars. Um, what's probably going to need to happen is the whole gutter system around the buildings have to be actually raised to the drip edge of the roof. For some reason, when that building was constructed, the gutter is too low, which is causing the fascia board to deteriorate, which, what we have out front now. So, part of that, half of that number was roughly gutter, the other half was what it's probably going to take to do the spot fixes for the moldings, for the touch up, any of the paint, um, any of the fascia boards or anything else like that. So, that's where we came up with the ten thousand dollar number. But we would probably put it out to bid, we need to put it out to bid, get qualified contractors to quote it, and, and get going with it.
I make a motion for the staff to inquire quotes from general contractors that would be willing and able and insured to do the job with a budget allowance of ten thousand to be represented to the Board of Commissioners as soon as possible.
Okay.
And the items discussed, unless there's other, because I didn't add the gutters.
But that's not including the step work.
No, sir.
We haven't even, I've not, I don't have a clue where that's going to be ballpark-wise.
Can we get that done in thirty days?
What's that?
It depends on what the.
We have to advertise for twenty-two, so, yeah, we can get the money.
Why do we have to advertise?
State statute requires it.
Yeah, it's state statute.
Yeah, we're, we're going to spend ten.
It's nine thousand, nine hundred, nine nine dollars.
We don't.
That's what the stage was.
Not if we do sid, I just said if we do sidewalks.
Nine thousand, nine hundred, nine nine.
If we do sidewalks, it's going to go over that ten thousand. We got ten thousand for the fascia and the gutter, not the sidewalk.
If we do that, he can contract, but he can take bids himself and decide.
We can get quotes, correct, yes.
Yeah.
We'll procure three quotes.
That's why I said the codes, quotes, and the concrete.
To us for approval, though, is what I thought you said.
Yes, but.
Otherwise, they could start getting the work done, because he has his spending limit is ten thousand anyway.
And the tins in the bucket.
Yes, tins in the budget.
We've got a budget amendment for that tonight, and that takes a second reading. So, we can't do anything with that until you have your second reading in fifteen days.
We need to keep the concrete for the steps separate.
I agree.
That's fine, no problem with that. I just want to make sure it's going to be.
Otherwise, we're going to delay the process of getting it done, and we could be into a bad weather season before we've got it done. So, we need to go ahead and get started on the fascia.
No problem. My, my biggest thing, concern about it was that we might do something, go and get your bid processed, whatever.
Before the winter rains.
Because it's going to become a liability of the property if we keep breaking up like it's my fall trip, break the neck on it.
If I'm not mistaken, I think they had to redo those steps when they originally were put in as well. This would be the third time these have been addressed.
It's, it's.
So, we do not have to go to bid?
No, not if we keep it under ten.
So, can, can you have that by the next, the nineteenth meeting?
Assuming that I have willing contractors that will participate and provide me quotes, yes.
Okay.
But if it's under ten thousand, we don't have to approve.
They can start working.
He can, when he.
Well, I don't know in two weeks that he'd find a contract, get a bid, and start working, so at that point, that would be great. So, I just said by the next meeting, if he had an update on it or to present, if it was over the ten, then we'd have to discuss it.
Yeah, he may find somebody and report back to us in two weeks that they're already started.
Right, right.
The only concern I had, and the concern I think the contractor had, was we know we have a major portion out front that needs to be replaced, that soffit and fascia board. Then I asked for a, uh, millennial foot cost for additional footages. And if it encompasses the whole building, what is it going to take, but not to exceed? And I had an issue with getting contractors to give me a not to exceed price on basically the per foot cost.
You're talking about gutters or fascia?
Both. The gutters came in fairly reasonable, but they have, they cannot be reused. And the seams on the gut, the gutters as they stand on the forty-fives are not installed properly.
So, by the nineteenth meeting, could you give us an update?
I'll try my best.
We'll keep you updated by email between now and then as well.
So, the plan of action is to look at those items and get a informational to meet with contractors to be able to report back on the nineteenth meeting?
Yes, right, approach contractors, yeah.
There be any other action? Item F, discuss and take action on current grants review and new grants. I, did I do something wrong? No, we had no action. Did I do a motion? I did a motion, did I?
No action.
No action. Thank you. Discuss and or take action on current grants review, and this I brought up and wanted to discuss, I know we're tearing on with our time here, but I wanted to discuss briefly. We have several grants, um, well, I'll say several, a few.
Right.
On the Parks and Greenway, if you have the little, I wish we could get that up. Can we get that up? But it talks about a fifty percent grant, an eighty percent grant, a hundred percent grant, seventy-five percent grant, seventy-five percent. grant, seventy-five percent grant, seventy-five percent grant. And my question to that is to revisit what our obligation is in those grants and to make sure in our two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget, the money is still there versus us moving forward on a project and the money not being there or? So, I'm going to ask City Manager Hyatt if you have any input on my half-question there.
We have, from what I can gather, what in front of me and the information we have, the, we have the City Center Greenway, which we do have the funds, that is in the Bowie Fund. Uh, the other part, the fifty percent obviously coming from the grant. The other grant is the Roadscapes. Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, we have that as well, that twenty percent, because they had come back that, that our twenty percent would be counted with the, um, um, contract, the NEPA document, correct? The other one is Safe Routes to School and that's a hundred percent grant, so, um, shouldn't be anything that we have to spend on those. The others, we don't really have. The others are the NPO Active Transportation, the NPO Surface Grant. And those should both, when they come due, should come out of our, um, to be expected street aid as we get to it.
Okay.
Because any one of those are going to happen in the next year.
I was going to ask Ms. Crystal to confirm.
Okay.
I don't see her present here, but my, my question of confirmation to this, um, financial would be, is the street, I mean, that's twenty-five percent of two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five, and then twenty-five percent of six hundred and seven thousand, six forty-three, and being street aid. So, if you have any comments, and I'm just trying to verify that we haven't got out of line discussing it and the fund balance is no longer accurate and we're not paying attention to it. Not that anyone is not.
Right.
But that's my question and I'm looking for clarification.
I'll have to sit and confirm that.
We'll have to get her to confirm it.
Okay. And the other conver, there be no action with that, if you can check on that?
Yes.
The next is the new grants. We had asked several months ago to discuss some new opportunity grants that we may be looking in some of these projects. And I don't recall, it may have happened without my knowledge, but I don't recall meeting or talking about the grant. So, I wanted to kind of talk with the Commissioners and say, you know, are you looking into? Do you know of any grants? Or is there anything that we should redirect staff to look at grants on any of our projects or our future projects?
And I know we've asked for, from the look into spots for grants on Lake Van Trail. Have we, have we got anything on that yet?
Lake Van, okay, grant.
We already.
Or handicap, okay?
Yeah, we have the, the grant money with the, um, the Greenway, which.
That was taken out of the Greenway.
That's separate, right, out of that project. But that, those funds have to be expended prior to applying for another grant under that specific grant process.
For the Greenway?
Yes.
And when does that expire?
Well, we have to actually expend the funds before we can apply again for additional funds for a new project.
Well, that's only if we apply through the Greenway Plan, right?
Correct.
Is there any, are there any other grants out there possible for handicap accessibilities or anything else? Have we, have we looked at that?
We've looked, not to my knowledge, but we have looked. We've, we've looked at some Department of Agriculture grants, but our per capita income eliminates, eliminates us from that. We no longer, our contract with the grant writers expired within the last thirty days, so we've got a, we've, I've been in touch with the GNRC, they do grant writing as well, and they take the administrative fees out of that. So, we've got a couple of options there to follow, if we want to go back with a grant writer, if we want to go with, uh, G, um, yeah, Greater National Regional Council.
Can we make sure we put that on the next, for the next meeting? Discuss either both of those, so that we can stay on top of it.
The, um, this may be the, I don't see the STP. Am I missing that somewhere?
Yes, it's under federal, that's the bottom one, the Surface Transportation.
Okay, the NPO Service Transportation of six hundred and seven thousand?
That's the resurfacing project.
Okay, um, it's, I have a document here that says these funds must be obligated by September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Has that been done?
We are currently, since we have not been released out into the construction phase, I had a meeting with TDOT Region Three and the Director of the Region Three. And we're currently waiting on a response back to them on the expiration of the funds. As soon as I, from what I'm understanding, they should give us an extension on it.
Have we requested an extension?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Says due to the September thirtieth deadline, we encourage you to initiate your desired project as soon as possible.
And the project is in NEPA phase, so we're waiting, we're waiting on historical, environmental stuff back from TDOT, so then we can proceed to design. Once design's approved, then we can proceed to construction. But we need to be in construction prior to this, the thirty-first, but that's why we've asked for the extension.
Okay.
And we've given a list, we've given a list to TDOT why it has taken us the four years to get the process approved through the NPO and the, and the hang-ups that we've had with them.
And when was that extension submitted to the state?
Roughly three weeks ago.
Of that nature. Once they notified us that we could actually submit an extension request.
Yeah, I was actually at a TDOT training.
This letter is dated two thousand and ten.
Right, and we had a discussion, they were at a meeting about a month ago and they've got information at that time to.
I was at a meeting with, with the Region roughly three weeks ago, some training, and they stood up and asked if anybody had funds that they're worried about expiring, see me after the training.
Okay.
You know where I went.
Yes, sir.
So, um, it is probably going to have to go up to the Commissioner, um, to get approval, but we've asked for a, an extension.
What type of extension did you request in your written format?
We just need to get to the construction phase. I mean, we need.
But was it certain days, certain timeframe?
No.
Just the word, we need an extension, not?
We need the extension so that we can complete the design and the construction of the project, so we do not lose the funds.
So, what happened September thirtieth and they've not responded to you? Have you?
Between the, Driggs and Maloney and I, we were following up with Whitney at TDOT.
Okay, and extension time date may be, uh, very important for you to extend, e- even if you're just projecting a year. At least it'll give you the time to work through. But if they don't respond by September thirtieth and you've not requested a specific date, I am concerned that we'll get a letter that that money is no longer available and that's not what anybody plans.
Right.
Well, and I don't understand it. I mean, I know there's a lot more to it and we have a lot of projects, but I don't even understand why we would have to ask for an extension. Like, why did we not do? I mean, are we staying on top of it is my concern.
Yes, we did. For two years, two and a half years, Don submitted projects to the NPO that were not recognized, that were not included, so we had to keep coming back with projects until they recognized the project. It was out of our control. We kept coming back and coming back. And that's the documentation we provided, is that they would not, they didn't reject them, they just didn't include them in their plan.
So, we provided that when we asked for the extension?
Correct, yes.
I'm looking here at two thousand and twelve and it was under Mr. Hooper's, uh, command and then it did change over to Leforn in May. I'm sorry, February. Yeah, February, it changed from Mr. Hooper to Mr. Leforn of two thousand and thirteen.
And I've been working with, uh, Mr. Leforn since October of last year. On trying to get these things off high center with TDOT. It's just that the processes that, since it's federal funds, the processes you have to go through to get approval.
Okay.
Uh, is there anything we can do on these other projects to prevent this from happening? You know, on our part, are we doing everything we need to do?
With, with all the ones that have grants, we are, we are on top of them, yes.
Okay, and the other, there's no grants on any of the city staff projects? So, the money of the twenty-five percent of two hundred and twenty-five and the money of the twenty-five percent of six oh seven will be confirmed with CFO?
Correct, that's roughly two hundred thousand dollars, ma'am. One thing with that Safe Routes to School, we had been notified about a year and a half ago, maybe two years, that they were using a group out of Memphis to do the, the NEPA, the environmentals. We kept, you know, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on. Finally, they moved off-center and got it. Uh, it's at no cost to us, so it's kind of hard to control somebody when you're not paying, uh, the bill. So, we finally got that accomplished. That, that's why that's drug on, because that was totally out of our hands. But we stayed on top of Diana Biedek with, I did personally with this, uh, uh, TDOT, federal funds that filtered down through TDOT. And we were, I was in constant contact with her trying to get that approved and we've got another.
You have that on D on the agenda for new business, right?
Correct, I believe that's correct. And then we're, we're moving along with that. So, now we're at that next phase and we're, that's, that is progressing. We've also got some opportunities for another, uh, Safe Routes, uh, grant that the Mayor just gave me a little while ago.
So, any other comments about new grants that we would like to evaluate or any of the current grants and their monetary positions by the board? We have some, uh, to-dos, but no action as far as discuss or motion. Moving on. G, discuss and/or take action on the City of Fairview projects. Mr. Hossinger?
Since we, uh, already started discussing some of these, such as the Greenway, we know where we're at, waiting on some of the approvals from federal and local agencies. So, there's no new status on the Greenway. Bowie Lake Road is in ninety-five percent construction. We're still waiting through, waiting through the punch list and getting the contractor to finish up the dress-up stuff prior to the Nature Fest. Um, I'm pushing on them to get that done so that it's dressed up and where it needs to be. Lake Van Trail, we know what that status is. Bowie Park Forestry, Keith could speak to this a little bit later, um, under his comments, but we're, we're still pursuing quotes. And there were some issues with the actual acreages and basels and the amounts of trees, so we're now having to re-mark some of the areas to get a better idea, because it wasn't done by the state properly in the first place. And I'll let Keith elaborate on that a little later.
I'd like for him to elaborate on that now.
Okay.
The Board of Commissioners voted on a state forestry plan. What do you mean there was confusion about the basels?
The, um, we had one, um, contractor come out and was asking certain questions, okay? It says stated zero basil. Do I, when I talked to him to get a, um, where this was located so that I could show these guys, he gave me the, I don't want to say excuse, but he, he mentioned that, he said a three point two acres, and we know it was also supposed to be divided in approximately one acre plots. He said that it was too small for him to do, so he just did it in two. And that's with none of the city staff knowing this.
In two? Two acres or two basil?
No, he did the three acres, but two parcels.
Okay.
Okay.
Instead of three.
And when I, when I asked the question, I said, you know, we had this discussion before that you cannot deviate from the plan that's been approved without having to bring it back to the Board for approval. So, I have a meeting with him, Kevin, uh, or City Arbors tomorrow morning to come back out here and market the credit right.
Okay.
And we will talk to.
What about the other two bids? Are you having no correspondence on those bids or are they not interested? Any, any response? We've been waiting almost ninety days for them to comment of whether they want to work or not, so I'm curious.
The one is waiting for the, the correct marketing, so he understands a better bid package. I'm going to have to go back to the first bid bidder to have him re-cement or add on to, to that.
Okay.
And the third one that we've been looking at, that I actually met with last week, or beginning of this week, sorry, um, he's looking at this very hard. We're not sure if he's going to or not.
Okay, so we have, at least they've corresponded back and you have more than one party that you're discussing the actual work with. Okay, and you have a meeting tomorrow with the Arbors and such. Great. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did I, did I miss something or did I dream something that possibly we were going to go away from that route and the city staff was going to do this theirs, themselves and we're going to save a tremendous amount of money?
You and I discussed at, at one point, just on, in a conversation, that, you know, that I said that might be an option if, if, once we got the bids.
Kevin, didn't you verify that, that your men?
I mean, the way I'm looking at it, I've, I've just poked around in a few places, but I could almost fly a professional person in here, train my staff on falling trees safely and, and do it with the resources we have and still come out ahead. And use the funds that we would for a contractor to buy new equipment or to.
Well, excuse my bluntness, hit or done.
And still save money.
Yes.
Correct.
But we've discussed that three or four times, then we went to bid, now we're waiting on bid.
Those people would normally do when they spend the next four months in the woods.
With two men, they were going to have twenty days total.
The bids were coming in at that, twenty days total with two, two people.
That's people that are professional loggers, that have been doing it for many years, understand how to fell those trees. That's not people that are going to a, a day or a two-day or a three-day course and then getting out there and do that. That's a, that's a penny wise, pound foolish proposal. We need professional people out there that will stand by their work.
And ensure.
If our staff gets out there and cuts the wrong trees or one of them gets hurt or something to that effect, it's a penny wise, pound foolish. If we can't afford to do it and do it right, we don't need to be doing it. And I, I.
Are you talking about logging or are you talking about just?
I'm talking about having people cut trees out in the woods that are not professional loggers. That we should, we should continue the path that we're on, which is to hire a contractor that does the work, is bonded and stands by their work.
So, what part of that contractor are you going to put in there saying that they can't, they've got to have seasoned people and prove to us that they've worked for them for ten years and this isn't their first day on the job?
I'm assuming that's part of vetting the contract with these contractors, that Kevin and Keith are doing their job and they're talking to these people about who's going to be out there. But even if they don't, they are responsible for it, not us.
So, you don't think the city would have any responsibility if a tree fell on someone in the park, no matter whom cut it?
I don't believe that if a contractor cuts it and the tree falls on them, the city does not have the primary responsibility. As Larry has told us before, there's only two kinds of, of cities, those that have been sued and those that are going to get sued. But the bottom line on it is, if I'm a contractor and I, I sign a contract to do something and then something happens to one of my employees, then that's my liability. That's not the city's, even if they sue us.
Well, and when you look at it, I'm sure that you'll be requiring workman's compensation and whatever those type things will be required, to take care of being liable to being a workman getting hurt. If they're professionals, sure as goodness they know how to line something off to keep the public out of the area. That's a brand post-proper area on it. So, it, it is important for us as far as liability goes and responsibility to make sure that we get it done right by somebody that can prove to us through past experience, license, workman's comp, all these other things, uh, that they know what they're doing.
Are you moving forward with additional information from the State Forester and moving forward with additional bids of potentially a second quote?
Yes, but my bigger concern now is city staff was going to participate in this, in this activity. The loggers were only going to be actually following the trees, topping trees and girdling trees and removing the branches themselves. City staff was actually going to have to haul the branches, would drag a chipper down the trail, so I need to know where the clear delineation of what city staff can and can't do. I need that guidance from the Board.
I would.
Once it's on the ground, you can do anything you want with it?
But what we're going to do is we're going to pay these loggers no telling how much money to leave trees laying there. They're not logging them, they're not, they're not bringing mules in and pulling them out, they're not bringing trucks in and pulling them out. We're paying somebody thousands of dollars to cut a tree and leave it laying there. I think that's crazy.
I agree. I, that was not my understanding.[1738.04] I thought they were going to take those trees out.
No, they're not, they're not taking them out.
The proposal that we had, they're going to be laying where they fall.
It's a test site?
We've already got too many trees laying where they fall.
Of three one acres.
You and I can go cut a tree. I promise you, it's not that difficult.
Well, it's, I believe our staff could do it and learn to do it. It's just, even if Mr. Hossinger is more accurate than I am on how long it'll take them to do it, that is X number of days of their regular work-
I understand that point.
-they can't do. And I, you know, we just have, we don't have a surplus of staff. And so if we have a storm and there's branches all over the city and people got branches piled up, just like every time a storm, they do that, who's going to chip those? And in the course of, you know, it just doesn't make much sense to me. Now, maybe I was asleep, but I thought that our original bid package that went out was not just to fell the trees, it was to fell the trees and take them out of there.
That was for the-
When we were going to sell it for pulp before our former staff member-
That was what was disgusting.
Missed all that and went over Mr. Pennington's head and got the project shut down, that's what, that was going to happen. We were actually going to make money. But now we're at the point where we're just going to cut trees and leave them laying there.
But I'm not, I apologize for missing that particular point, but I don't, as I patrol the park three days a week, we've got too many trees already down.
That was a request of the park board for the habitation. I was looking for Keith for validation that I didn't have to-
It was a recommendation by the state.
And then the state-
Just leave them?
The state also commented because it's only a three-acre test site, whereas we originally were discussing many acres to be extracted for the purpose of thinning. But whenever the conservative part came back and we're only talking about three acres-
As a test.
As three one-acre test sites, that's where the dropping for the habitation to see how it worked. Versus other areas. So we're in a test site movement now, not what we need to get done according to the State of Tennessee Forestry Plan.
I'm with you. I think if we're going to do it, we need to have them removed, removed. But the talk was that there were some certain people that were terrified of machinery driving through the park was the reason that that got changed.
Well, and I believe it was a recommendation of the state, it's some time for the habitat, you know? So I don't know that this was-
There was also, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but there was also a statement from our arborist about the vegetation and the undergrowth and the privates and non-invasive things that would grow too quickly in a large area. So it showed a test site of how you can move it away and replant the ground timely. That was all discussed also.
I'm not sure I followed you there.
Talking about if we did the large site that's needed for the thinning?
It'd be overtaken with privates.
It would be overtaken with non-invasives and privates and that's why it was said just leave in that small site so then they could see how quickly they could reforest, reforest straight, reforest the ground. So those were conversations of the dropping leave.
I understood the reason that we moved from a larger plot of land to a smaller plot of land. Three acres of land still sounds like a lot of land to me. My yard is about three-quarters of an acre, so I multiply that out. That looks like a pretty good piece of land to me to drop logs, drop trees.
And leave them.
Knowing what I see three times a week out there, we've already got a lot of trees on the ground in this particular area. And there is the forestry part of this that is required. There's also, you know, we refer to this as our crown jewel and all this other. There's an aesthetic part of this that we have to deal with as well. So I'm just, when we're talking to these people, I'd like to at least know what the other option is and that's to have them out. But I don't think city staff ought to be doing, I don't think city staff ought to be taking them out. I don't think they ought to be cutting them because, one, I don't think we have anybody in the wings to do the work that they would normally accomplish in that month, if it took a month or however long it took. Two, I think that there's a liability issue there in terms of, that's not, one, it's not in their job description, but two, it's not what they do, you know, 99% of the time. It's different, it's different. And so if there was a group of people that were concerned about the transport of the logs out, they'll really be concerned when trees start falling and start knocking other hardwood trees down and everything else that we didn't want to come out of there. So I just think it's the kind of thing that needs to be professionally done. And quite frankly, I think it's, for whatever reason, it's somewhat similar to the situation we were in with fire trucks first and police cars next. This should have been done years ago. And so we wouldn't be at this crucial statement, our critical point now where it's going to cost us more money to set it up on the right sort of system, which is what we need. A forestry management system that operates and does this thing on a regular and recurring basis so that we know each year we're going to spend $25,000 or whatever it is to have this done each year in this particular plot of land, this particular sized land. And so I just think it's like everything else. We're either lucky or unlucky, if you want to think of us as that way, as a board that, and that we are doing the right thing in that we are setting these systems up to operate from now into the future in a proper manner.
And that's why my statement, once we agreed on the forestry plan of only three acres, is this is not what the state requested. They requested us having an ongoing forestry plan. And I believe we took an extremely conservative route discussing three acres when we had before us the desire and the need from the forester that spoke of many more acres. I don't want to speak, was it 53, 58, 63, whatever?
Something in that neighborhood.
48, somewhere in that neighborhood, and I'm sorry, I don't have the detail.
35.
35 total? Okay, so at that point, we are now discussing three acres in a way that it's not profitable, it's not feasible, it's small, it's something of little, and to think of them being dropped and left. So you can see that the big project is not what we're really discussing. We're discussing a let's-do miniature project to see what we want to do for the big project.
If I can say just a little bit, just going backwards just a little bit, the lottobollie ponds are not indigenous to this area in the first place. They were placed there, somebody can repeat this if they want to, by Dr. Bowie, with some of the main intentions of being able to be used sometime for pulp to help support the park at one time or another. If I'm pleased, repeating again, if I'm wrong, I just read a study the other day about the beetles that in effect coming this way. And we thought it was going to be a lot sooner than it was, but I believe it's still five to seven years out. I don't know, and I'm not a forester at all, but I don't know if we can cut these trees and see what kind of accomplishment we're going to have for reforestation in five years. I think the beetles are going to do it for us in about five to 10 years, anywhere you go. Am I correct in this or not?
They've already been here before and we had-
Right, we had the clear-
Had problems.
And it's just, it's just-
You're exactly right. For the great thing that she did in giving us the park, she made a big error in the type of trees that she planted and the state told us that. And I don't think that she had any intentions to sell them for pulp. She bought them because they were the cheapest tree, period.
And grew fast.
Yeah, that's correct.
One of the discussions that we had, if everybody recalls, was holding off until they became plank-worthy, where they could be sold for lumber instead of pulp. And that was a little bit, looking at that, you know, rather than just they're going to fall down, they're going to rot, they're going to clutter everything. It takes a long time for a 100-foot tree to rot. And I don't care who you are or whatever, and I'm, there again, I don't have any expertise in it, but I'd like to go back and look at the original planning that we had that made it feasible for somebody to come in and do a job that size.
The quicker we can get them out and replace them with hardwoods, the better off the park is going to be.
We have a plan for reforestation, if I'm saying that right, sitting, looking right in front of us with our schools and the presentation Dr. Oyer gave us.
With hardwoods.
With hardwoods.
Correct.
I would like to revisit that as well. I mean, that's not the subject at the matter because we did approve a forestry plan of three test sites of one acre. And I don't know that that needs to be not moved forward on because that is an opportunity for us to see the differences, whether it's extracted or left in, whether they're dropped and then staff comes and cuts it up later and it's used in the back fire ring for the events. That's a whole nother staff opportunity. If staff is looking going, this is not aesthetically pretty and those trees don't need to all be there, then staff could move them from one part to the other. That's feasible, wouldn't you say?
Yes, and I think-
And then to revisit the bigger plan, I believe putting it back on the agenda is of necessity after today's discussion.
I think so.
Well, wasn't it already approved? I mean, I thought they were moving forward. I don't understand-
We went from his first-
Right.
And then we went very conservative down to a three-acre from the 35-acre. And we never voted on the 35 specific, three-acre to precedents.
We put it out for bid, but nobody bid on it. And so that's where we are. Then we came back, said we're just going to go out and start, now we can go get quotes, no matter what it costs, but we still have to bring it back to you. The first one came in around-
Only for the three acres?
Correct, came in around 14,000. We have no idea where he's going to drop the trees. We don't, he's going to work till like 2:00 in the afternoon and that's it, and we don't know how long it's going to take. That's where he started. We're talking 60, 30 and zero basil, if I remember correctly. And if you hold a penny up at arm's length, count the trees in that penny, that's your basil. And so that's what we're looking at. Isn't that what it is, a penny?
Zero sixty ninety.
Zero sixty ninety? Yes.
I think it's roughly 250 trees for those three acres.
And if you want to look at the studies, go over and look at what Walmart looked like when they started putting all them trees down in that small area where they all were.
Okay, you've got a meeting tomorrow and you've got some more quotes. And we're going to discuss this on the 19th because we may even discuss the other plan and get everybody refreshed on what the forester came to us and gave us advice on. Continue, sir.
All right. The next item we have is the Triangle School. I met with an architect, architectural firm and an engineering firm out there last Thursday. They basically took some measurements, took plenty of photos, asked a lot of questions, a lot of the questions I didn't have answers for. They're going to get with Don LeVorn, hopefully early next week to get those answered. But in a nutshell, shooting from the hip, from where the building stands today, through design, development for all phases, 100% construction to what we need, they said the budget amount is 200 a square foot. Which at 1,800 square feet, I think that's $360,000 to make it what it needs to be.
Is that in a written?
No, I'll be getting that, it'll be presented hopefully next meeting by Don LeVorn.
Okay, we'll move on since he's got that-
I'm sorry, you say 360,000?
Yes, sir.
We're not talking about the Hermitage here, we're talking about Triangle School. We've already spent 200 and something thousand on it, am I right?
I don't think we spent quite that much.
I bet you it's close.
About 100 and a half.
But until they get the documents on the structural revisions we've done, just coming out there saying, is this sticker shock? This is roughly what it's going to cost. Now, they have also said they'll work with us, they'll do different phases. We can do an exterior phase and have a guaranteed, you know, a price on that. Then we can do an interior phase. And there's some other things that the previous architect did that they can't reuse his intellectual property. So they're going to have to come up with some of their own design, even though as part of the meeting minutes here, they can't use his intellectual property based on the architectural code. So we'll give him as much information as we've got previously and guide him in the right direction of what we approved layout-wise, and they're going to have to come up with that new design. But I should, we should have something new from them to present at the next meeting. But they're saying first blush, 200 a square foot.
So when did we contact them to come out here?
That was probably a month ago after the last guy wouldn't move, the last guy wouldn't move forward.
But we've been working on the project for five years now. And I know that the cost has gone up, but I mean, my impression was we were going to finish the job for about another additional 49,000?
In April of 2012, there was $80,000 to date from the general fund reported on the Triangle School project.
And we spent how much?
We spent another 49 on the-
That's what I'm saying, roughly.
Structural integrity of the building.
Building it up and everything, so it's more than triple in just a year.
October of 12, it was 128,565. And that was reported by LeVorn on October 12. And completion date was November 12.
What questions could you not answer?
There were certain previous inspections, interior paint specs, lead paint, environmental, all kinds of questions that had probably been done in a study prior to it being put on city property that I didn't have the answers for. Some of the stuff that relates to the PUD and the specific layout and the restroom requirements and things like that that have been discussed in the past.
Did they come while Don was on vacation?
No, Don was actually at a meeting at Dixon Water Authority.
You know, I still, in this, I don't know why, did we ever look into grants when we were paying a grant writer on Triangle School to try to, you know, get money?
Tried to find historical grants, there's just not a lot out there being given away right now.
So we applied for-
No, we just investigated to see what it would take.
But to that comment, when I was approached by this architect, he had a lot more activity with the historical aspect and knew of what things could and couldn't be done that would violate the national registry. So he was well more in tune with that aspect of the types of construction.
Was Dr. Rice at that meeting?
No.
I believe he did request it, but that's not an absolute thing. I want to know what the difference is between the $89,000 and 300,000.
That's, once again, I said first blush, shooting from the hip, they're saying $200 a square foot. Multiply it times 1,800 square feet, that's where we get us. It could come in lower than that, depending on what they find structurally.
That was worst case scenario.
We've already had structure approved, haven't we?
Yes.
Right, that was worst case scenario to him.
We have to formally transmit those documents to their engineers of record so they can confirm that the was done.
I know it seems to be never-ending. It always seems handout, I heard, you know, Commissioner Basel say about the cost. But the thing about it is, at some point we got to say, if we stop, that's when we wasted the money. To get the job done and go ahead and press forward, then it was an investment for potential. So I hear the money and it makes my stomach turn to think that, you know, we're having to fork more out to it. But if we stop now, we have wasted tax dollars. And we're better off to press ahead and get it done. The longer we wait, the more expense occurs, the more cost to do it, and then we've wasted people's money and time. So I think we're better off to figure out how we're going to pay for it and what are we going to do? And can we get a grant? Do we have a fundraising committee? Can we get some community members to jump on board and just keep moving forward? Because the sad thing about it, and I wasn't on the commission at the time, and so I don't know, but somebody thought it was a good idea to invest in this historical site. And so now we're stuck with it, you know? We have to either see it through or, I mean, I guess we could say it's a money pit and back up, but that's when the waste comes. That's when we wasted tax dollars.
Well, in my opinion, the more, where's the money going to come from, 300,000? It's nowhere close to being in our budget. Although the other, original 89,000 or whatever it was, we did approve it and we already spent half of it, and the rest of it is there. And I've got a couple of questions, is why did it triple in a year? When we had approval and we had people oversight and overseeing what we were doing with the engineer, with everything that we were doing there. And, you know, I get tired of paying for things two or three times. It's just like the city plan coming from Lake Road up here, that was going to almost have to be completely redone at another expense that we already paid like $10,000 to get it done. That's, you know, we, we're not doing a good job of following up on what we need to be getting done onsite. It, 89,000, why is it stayed here for another year and a half and now it's 300,000? And I know you said that's worst case scenario and I understand that too. But $200 a square foot, I'm going to have an explanation on that for that building over there. You can build the finest home in this town for, how much a square foot?
120.
120. I mean, and I know it's historical and I know there's different features that go into it and things like that, but that's a big figure.
You're, sorry, that's also, you've got to take into consideration all the design fees. That's not putting marble on the floors. That's actually having the engineers run the calculations. That's the architect designing the insulation. That $200 includes all the actual architectural and engineering going in to get to the finished product.
But if I understand correctly, and this is just my recollection of everything, so I stand to be corrected if I'm not. The way we got into this was certainly not this board. This was a previous board and they obligated 20 or 25,000 per year to this effort chaired by Dr. Rice. And we paid that, we've paid that every year. We've installed that 80,000- And we paid that. We've paid that every year. We've, we've installed that eighty thousand dollars out there. And then we found out, having spent that eighty thousand dollars, this board made the decision to spend the extra forty-something thousand to make it where the floors wouldn't fall through and it was structurally sound. Okay, so we have a building that is structurally sound. We could open the door tomorrow and let people go through it. We don't have to have a kitchen. We don't have to have a restroom. We can, it is historical building, a schoolhouse right now. Little paint, some Scotts Liquid Gold on some of the wood stuff.
Fix some windows.
Broom, build some shelves. And our historical place is open, because my understanding that the only thing from a cosmetic standpoint, when you stand and look at it, is, needs a little shrubbery around it, and it needs the windows to be fixed, which Dr. Rice has supposedly got the money and already in charge of.
Right.
So he's got thirty-something thousand dollars that they made in an auction that they could furnish it with and finish that. If we just put it in a presentable format, and as nice as it is that Mr. Clark was going to install this HVAC system for us, that's not part of that schoolhouse. I don't think it had central heat and air when it was operating as a schoolhouse.
Well, that's, that's true, but the Hermitage didn't either.
Well, yeah, but the Hermitage belonged to a President of the United States. This schoolhouse-
Belonged to Dr. Bowie.
Well, may have, belonged to Dr. Bowie after the county sold it and it was closed. And both of those things occurred while it was still in the county. It has no connection to the city of Fairview at all, other than now it's in the city.
Well, didn't the daughter sell it? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Let me finish my rotation here, and I'll be, I'll go back in the-
It was, it was a school inside the city.
No. No, not according to the county records. It was not, it was annexed into the city in nineteen sixty-four. It quit operating in nineteen sixty-two. And was sold to Dr. Bowie.
That was before my time.
It quit operating-
I was a young man, but I can read.
It quit operating in what year? Sixty-two? The city was incorporated in fifty-nine. That may not have been, that may not have been-
It was not part of the city. The city went that way when the new high school was built, which is now the rec center. The city expanded out to get it then. Till that point, the city limits did not extend to the school. So, so at this particular point, I think where, where I've come is, is that I agree with Commissioner Carroll. We don't just walk away from it.
Right.
But we stop and we say, hey, we're not building the Hermitage here. We're building a two-room schoolhouse that has some historic value to some of our citizens, but to most of our citizens it doesn't. And, and what is it gonna take us to get that to the point that the historical commission that, that's been doing this can take it over and can run it and do all that stuff? And I don't think it's gonna take three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I think it, I think for a, a lot less amount of money, I don't know, I'm not into construction, I don't know what that is, but I think for a lot less money, maybe a community day or something where everybody goes out there and fix, I mean, they raise a house out here, you know, a horn tavern in a-
Fourteen days.
In a fourteen days. You know, two community Saturdays where everybody brings paintbrush and comes out there and does those things, because we've paid for it to be structurally sound. Now we got another engineering firm that's gonna tell us-
That it's structurally sound.
That it's not.
Or it is. Or it is.
Or it is.
Right.
I bet you they, they tell us there's something else they have to do, because that's just the way the business works. So I'm, I'm, agree with Commissioner Carroll, we don't just walk away. But I think from this point on, we need to have a clearly defined vision. And my clearly defined vision is a two-room schoolhouse. No air conditioning, no restrooms, none of that stuff. It's a true historic building. Not, I, I, it just costs too much to make it into a multifunctional building that can have weddings and, and meetings and all this other stuff. That's too much of an investment for the city. We don't, we don't have that need yet. But I don't, I don't wanna just walk away from it.
I don't have any problem with not putting restrooms and stuff in there, but if we've got somebody that's going to donate the labor and the machinery to put the air conditioning in, why would we not accept it? If it's gonna be completely free-
Because who's paying the bill?
Well-
With it running, with windows who may not be sealed tight and insulation that may not be good. In January of two thousand and eleven, when I picked up this crying baby on the floor, I said, the only thing we want out of this is a certificate of occupancy, so people can walk in the door, which was its goal, to show people the history of the two-room. Do we have a certificate of occupancy as it sits now?
Not that I'm aware of.
It was said that because the file does not have, and I know the codes is not here to verify, but it was said by codes that the file did not have, and a structural engineer, when that was done and the items were corrected and that file could be documented, that it was structurally sound, then the potential of a certificate of occupancy. So I think what we're all saying may be getting to where is the certificate of occupancy lying at this point with codes? And if it is near there or there, our goal is to open the doors and show it off. The finished product of the big dream may and may not be the city's burden for the taxpayers' money to pay. And that's, I think, what I'm hearing out of many of the commissioners at this time.
My, to entertain a thought, when we approved the eighty-nine thousand dollars, that was to complete the project, in our minds, what it was. We've, we've got roughly fifty thousand dollars that is sitting there to do it. We're doing this in cooperation with the Historical Society in the first place. They raised thirty thousand dollars. I'm of the opinion with the proper controls, so don't make, jump me too quick here, that the city maintained the fund with the, with anything they wanna do, the Historical Society comes in here to do, has to be approved through our codes, if it makes sure it's done correctly, whatever the case may be, and let them finish it out. They need to raise another hundred thousand dollars, let them raise another hundred thousand dollars, or two, or whatever the case might be. I don't think that's their goal. I think they wanna get as gear of what it was at the time the school's operating as they can. And we've already, we've allocated enough money already, but we're holding it up and it just costs us more and more and more.
And asking more people to come tell us the same thing.
Same thing, and if, 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 if they said, and if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Rice agreed with the amount, am I right? I don't, vice mayor? So, you know, that, that figure was set out there and, fine, the money's here, you bring us a bill, make sure it goes through codes, it gets approved, and, and we'll write the check to whoever did the work for you, up to the forty-nine thousand dollars. In the meantime, we can have fundraisers, we can do whatever you want to, put it in a special fund for the historical village over here, whatever we're gonna do with it. I don't mind doing that at all, but some points gotta end. And for us to be sticking three hundred thou, or even half of that, I don't care.
Certificate of occupancy is the ending spot.
So for us to-
That could be given in the morning.
Well, if it's approved without the consideration of it needs this, if you have that, because if we don't have insulation, we don't need a insulation architect. And if we don't have AC, we don't need a manual J. And all of this that has been needed is not truly needed for the purpose of the occupying to view a historical school.
That, that would be my-
And the rest can be discussed as the project unfolds with funds.
That would be my suggestion to take it off of our total responsibility and ongoing forever and ever and everything. And, you know, like I said, when we, every time I'm twenty-five thousand dollars a year, it's, it's gone way over that. What we approved this last year was four years of that at one time. I'd, I'd like for us to really consider taking what's, what's there and doing it as a suggestion, with, with proper authority from the codes and everything approving what they're gonna do. Let them see what it's gonna go from here.
If memory serves me right, we have about thirteen and a half thousand left of that, eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, thirteen thousand?
Cause we paid some of those bills, so.
Okay.
I, I just think we need to have, and I think we're all saying the same thing, just with a little different angle. I, I, I don't think we can invest the kinda money that, that Mr. Holsinger has gone out, and thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
I think that puts it really into clear perspective for me. I, I, uh, we've gone too far not to have some things that this is, that people can visit.
Absolutely.
And, but, uh, we're not building the Hermitage. The president didn't live there. And, and, uh, I don't even think we had a mayor that lived there. Maybe we had a mayor that studied there or something, but I, but I, I, you know, we can, we, there is a median ground here, but we need to get a firm fix on it, because I agree with Mr. Sutton. We, we can't, every year, this can't be a budget item for us. We've gotta just make our commitment, live up to that commitment, and on the next day, we're done. My understanding is that some of the other places in Williamson County were not funded by the county, that they were, that the historical societies that were, were doing. They had contributions from the county, obviously.
We have a question to the codes of what it, where is the certificate of occupancy positioned?
So what, from, from what I understand, we need to get it back to nineteen sixty-two, as it was left, when the last student walked out of school with the chalkboards, everything on there, in a grants with local code, codes that are required today for occupancy.
For occupancy, for people to go through, whatever that is.
To visit, yes.
And then we may have some more discussion once the codes delivers that info.
That's crystal clear.
You wanna go to roadscapes?
That was part of the, um, stuff we discussed earlier about where the funds are and the phases and the, and we do not have any new update that I'm, that I'm aware of on the roadscape project. The same goes for the safe routes to school and the two NPO projects. On the welcome signs, I'm still, um, working with Larry on getting the agreement in place for the location of the sign.
What's the problem?
Okay, yeah, because the owner has stated to me she doesn't know what the problem is. She's been waiting on the city for months and she's willing to say yay as long as the clause is, it would be removed if the property is sold. So what are we waiting on?
Well, I'm not so sure I like that clause, um, because, I mean, I would spend that kinda money to, you know, it's for sale. They're not, it's on the market. So, I mean, I think it's a generous offer, but why would we pay for a sign if it's on the market?
Comment, we've been waiting for the city attorney, the new, uh, road person. Head of Public Works, uh, got, got with us a long time ago. They decided where the placement would be. To our understanding, they were left and waiting for the city to draw it up by the city attorney to sign easement papers for us to sign. They also said that they would maintain the grass around the area and that the clause that states the sign may be moved in the future if deemed necessary by the owners. And if, I mean, that's what they're at, waiting to be drawn up to sign for what he's saying we're waiting on, so if we don't like that clause.
Now, that, that last sentence was not discussed with Mr. Beata when I was out there. I know it's his mother's property.
Also, they said they would make, around the area and also have a clause that states the sign may be moved in a future, in the future, if deemed necessary by the owners, in quotes. So we look like we are still discussing what is agreed for Larry to write up.
I don't have a land description. I'm gonna have a property description to draw an easement.
Who gives you that?
Pardon me?
Who would give you that?
Uh, it would have to be done by the, by the city surveyor, because I can't, uh-
I don't have an issue with it at all, and for one reason that no one's thinking of, I guess, but this'll tell you. It's no different than the utilities having to be moved. If they go out there and they widen the highway, they've gotta dig up the water lines, it's already there. There's no sewer lines there, of course, but the water lines are there. All those would have to be moved, so why would there be, why would we want to tell somebody that we want to, you're gonna give us something for free, but we're gonna diminish the property value in the meantime, but say, or could, because we're gonna be unwilling to let us move a sign where you gave us the ability to put it there for free? Now, if we were paying them for a spot, then it should be our spot.
Well, maybe we should, because here's the problem I see, is why would we pay money? And I understand, I mean, you have a valid point about the property, you know, and utilities, but why would we spend money to build it, knowing it's for sale, knowing that their hopes is to sell it, not knowing what the property, it's only like a temporary, um, agreement?
I think we oughta put it at Triangle School. I've thought that all along. We own that property, put it there.
We own it there, we can put it there next week. We can build it there. And, and, uh, it's not, I mean, we're putting our, our welcome to Fairview sign in the mid, I know the Beatas have that piece of property, but all the way around it is some of the staunch, uh, uh, people that don't like the city. I mean, they, you know, without calling names, y'all, y'all know what I'm talking about. There it is, welcome to the city, but these folks across the street and next door don't. I mean, I've, I've said the first building you get to is the little thrift store that is not in the city that looks like they just threw a sign up. So, you know, why wouldn't we wait until we got to civilization, got to, uh, the rec center and the, and the, uh, the fa, I guess Fastpace is moving, but what, why, why didn't-
I'm with you.
Why don't we do that? Or buy the sign from Fastpace when they move and just make that the welcome to Fairview sign? And leave it right there?
Hey, well, as far as waste-
You know, and then we don't build one, we take that other money and build, you know, put it on the Bowie Park sign.
Got a message board.
Put it on some other sign, and we just buy the sign from Fastpace when they're moving.
Well, we spent several, several months talking about the third location, and that was the projected one that seemed to be okay. We are now hearing maybe it isn't, or it needs to be revisited.
Cause the PUD, you could only have one sign or something like that, isn't that true?
Do what?
Cause of the PUD, you could only have one sign or something, and I think that was the confusion.
Yeah, but the PUD is, it doesn't cost us anything to change.
Correct.
We changed the PUD quicker than we write up the deed to get the easement and never have to worry about moving our sign again if we don't want to.
But with your Fastpace sign, that's on private property, and what are you gonna do by the property that goes with it? Am I gonna give it to you? Am I gonna sell you that little piece of, I-
You don't know. I mean, I don't know what they'll do.
They might move it down here with them, they might move it down here with them, since they've already bought it.
My point being that that's inside what people think of as the city. You do, I know technically you're in the city, but people don't think of you being in the city until you top that hill and get to the rec center.
It's like coming this way, when you top the hill, people think they're in the city.
Right. And so, so, it's, it's not the same thing. There wasn't an existence.
That's my point.
If the city manager put the sign there, we can put the sign there.
Right, that PUD is our own creation.
If I remember, if I, if I remember correctly, that Triangle School was the first place that staff recommended putting the sign, if I remember correctly.
Right.
And we somehow ended up somewhere else.
Get closer to eight forty if possible, but obviously-
And with the slopes, it was very hard to find.
It's not as possible. Well, I'm okay for, uh, we have a discussion, we have a discuss and take action on city projects. Is there a motion for the movement?
I make a motion that we pull the sign, uh, at, uh, that corner of Triangle School.
Second.
And the only discussion I would put is if it does have to go through the process of the PUD alteration, then that would be moved quickly into the codes convi, comments, cause if it's, no, you can't do that because of this, then we'll, because of that, then do it.
Well, and as part of my motion, we suspend the PUD that pertains, any regulation, the PUD that pertains to that, to allow the immediate construction, weather permitting of that sign.
We just got through changing the PUD, didn't we?
Yes.
I don't know that you could-
Larry?
I don't know if we can-
I don't know that you can join those motions.
You, you would have to amend the, the PUD and just take two readings of an ordinance to amend the PUD, just like you amended it to take off the building name.
But, but when you have a PUD, when you have a PUD, who enforces the PUD?
We do. We can place the sign wherever we want.
We do. So, so here's the deal.
The sign of the property.
Mr. City Manager, don't enforce that part of the PUD until we can get that paperwork cleaned up.
Do I have two other, do I have two other eyes?
It's not saying you could, you couldn't start it. Um, it, we just need to amend the PUD so that you're, that you're, you're, uh, it's applied like it is to everybody else. You've got a sign there, it's covered in the, in the amendment to the, to the PUD. You know, you draw up the, uh, the plat and there it is.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the solution to the problem.
We have a motion and a second on the movement, the adjustment of the placement of the sign of the third sign. At the discussion.
Those are just dry stack, correct?
Yes, and glued together.
They're glued together.
It's not like to blow up, it'll go dust, they could be using that PUD.
We could prime apart. We could prime apart.
And my comment in discussion would be asking the board of straight or angle, so we don't get into that conversation after the fact?
And the location on the property.
Location on the property.
Up high, down low, or in the middle?
Well, I, I think you put it as near to the intersection as you possibly can.
Of Deer Region one hundred.
Where it's clearly visible, and, and I think because it is a triangular piece of property, I think it has to have some curve to it or some slant to it.
Angle.
Okay.
And then we'll have to verify with T-Dot the right-of-way width there to make sure.
Yeah, get outside of T-Dot's right-of-way. And put the sign.
Okay. I'll make a, an educated guess on where y'all want it and its orientation, and we can put some stakes out there if y'all wanna review it, if that's all possible.
Keep it in mind, if you have to move it, the foundation, I don't think you have to restructure it by law.
That's correct. That's correct, it actually has a quite large foundation.
It doesn't have to be the one hundreds.
Actually, it's, I took the original drawing based on what they had, and that's the, that's the size foundation they required for the, the, the stone that was on, because the original, that original sign is actually CMU grout filled block with a veneer on it, which would weigh probably more than my dry stacked stone that are currently in place.
When you inspected my sign, what did you find?
Oh, I would, yours is dry stacked and they use a liquid adhesive. That's the same thing, we, we went off that idea on ours.
You know what the, uh, the base is made out of?
No.
Compacted limestone, no concrete at all.
Okay.
Has not moved a quarter of inch.
I mean.
All it is is crushed and run and packed down low.
Okay.
We have more discussion?
Well, I would like to just say it for the record. Um, I would like it to match the other sign on Highway One Hundred, so I would like.
Y'all already made that clear.
Yeah, that's clear, crystal.
So, color.
Same, the green color down there, One Hundred.
Any other discussion?
With the same information on the back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Were there a, opposed? You opposed to putting it on Triangle School?
I've always been working on getting it put, asking people to get it put, we're saying it's going to be great. The idea of ever having to move it again, eventually one day that sign will be in the middle.
Thank you for that explanation.
Mayor, may I, I would suggest that once he's located the potential place, that he communicate this to Don so he can, he can get it on the drawing for the PUD, and then I can get started drawing the ordinance to amend the PUD.
Yes, there's going to be several comments come out of the codes department on things that we make, should have done or not done the way we done it, so.
I just can get sorry, because I've been waiting.
Volunteer him for something, anyone who misses something.
I've been waiting for a description for where it was going to go, I, you know, I can't write an easement without a description, but if.
Okay, so, the point to that, and I appreciate you saying that, but the point to that is, May of two thousand and thirteen, it was, we're waiting on the attorney to draw the documents, and at that point, I'm not pointing any fingers, but that's why I asked, what are we waiting on when we're waiting on you?
Right.
And you don't have what you need to go follow.
I understand, I mean, but I can't draw an easement without a legal description.
I understand, and that's why I asked, who provides that? Because at this point, they've been waiting on you and you've been waiting on them.
Right, it'd have to be, it'd have to be surveyed by a surveyor and then given to me.
Yeah. Okay, projects.
We're under the city paving portion.
Yes, sir, move along.
I've got some good information, and I've shared that with the city attorney, and hopefully, he said, maybe late next week, middle next week, we can have a draft document that we can go through together, and we can, by the end of the month, have the per tonnage pavement and bid out and under contract.
For the record, I got that today.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I received that today. Nothing new on the transportation, city center overlay, city survey.
Went out today, yesterday on.
City survey is live on the web. City survey is at fairview-tn.org. I'm saying that to the public and the people of the audience. If you'd like to make the survey and make it worth our while to get information from the public, please fill it out, it's a short eight-question survey, and we would be delighted to get your input. Fairview-tn.org, city survey.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt.
Go ahead.
Uh, and the survey is about our entire.
Parks and Recreation, yes, sir.
Parks and Recreation, it is not about, just about Bowie Park.
Thank you.
Correct.
The next project, Windstream Networking, they're pretty much close to porting all the numbers over to Wind Stream's line, and we're ninety-five percent complete there, and then the last on the Veterans Memorial, we're about fifty percent done. The city manager and I are working on a few things to, to get that to fruition through cost savings.
Okay, let me ask that this is, that this is updated, and the reason I say that is the city survey is at a hundred percent, not zero percent.
Right.
And as we discussed, there may be a list of done projects that this will now roll off to.
That's correct.
But we did discuss in planning that a survey would be an ongoing process, maybe quarterly or semi-annually, to draw the public's opinion and comments about certain things, departments, and programs.
And I've already got some questions that we want to bring, I don't know why it's not cutting off, by the way, I'm trying to.
Okay, that's fine.
But I've, I've already got some questions that we're going to start formulating and, and put a small survey in front of y'all for the next one, so we can keep that rolling. When the other one comes off, we put another one up.
And I, I did, that we used to have Evergreen on here.
Yes, sir.
And I have taken that one off, but instead of really taking it off, I just hide the cell so that if we ever need to go back and look at the project as a whole, we have a living document.
That was another question, is where is, why is Evergreen and Veteran Memorial both on the list? They're the same thing, sort of. Evergreen's not there, you, all right, you did take it off.
We're a hundred percent complete with the funds we had from last year's budget.
It was one of my questions on your last sheet, I was going to ask here, but it wasn't here to ask.
Yes, we're rolling it in now to the memorial park.
Okay.
Good job.
Any other questions?
Comments or questions from the board, or any adjustments of action? Thank you, sir, very much, I appreciate your updates.
Oh, can I make one other?
Oh, we were moving forward.
This, this will take just a second. We're all aware that we're fixing to lose him. He's going to, his boss is telling him he needs to move, which is his wife.
Yes.
We're, I miss you, you've done a lot of good things that you've been here, and I hate to see you leave.
Well, as being a, you know, a taxpayer of the city of Fairview, I try to be a good steward of the, of the taxpayers, and being a citizen here myself, I, I look to those as a focus on everything we do for the city.
Couldn't you just let her go and you stop?
No.
Thank you for letting you down.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to continue working with the city manager on getting these projects done, and he'll have ample notice. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, new business, A, discuss and take action on recommendation, recommendation from the Planning Commission, and I have a note here on item eight A, recommendation from the Planning Commission, a rezoning application for Mr. Kelly Shiver. The motion would be to ask the city attorney to draw up the paperwork. Do I have a motion? Does he have to be present?
He had, he had a rep.
He's had a representative here, but he didn't say anything, so it's.
Okay.
But he was here.
He was here, yes, I spoke with him.
Second.
First, second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This, item eight B, dis, discuss and take action on safer grant for fire department, Chief Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this time last year, we put in for a safer grant for four hundred and fifty thousand change for three full-time positions for three years. They're on the job, we're back, back to time to apply again. Generally, we have one safer grant, rather than they don't give you two, if you don't ask, you ain't going to get, so we're going to ask anyway. We're putting in for sixty thousand bucks for recruitment and retention of volunteers. This will include some TV spots, some radio spots, buying their bunker gear, that stuff we have to replace anyway. I'll get some money for that. We also give them a twenty-five dollar stipend, and I'll pay that, take that off of the city's. No matching, this is an outright grant. We, we pay for it, give them a receipt, they write us a check back. And I, I don't think it's a time limit, we get, we, we keep it till we pay the sixty thousand, I recall. We tried to get you some backup material, but the feds are all online, and the only thing I did was do the print screen, which turned out to be forty pages, and it doesn't print the little boxes, you know, when you say Fairview and you have to pull down for Tennessee, so you got a lot of words on the thing, so Theresa and I say, rather than kill two hundred and fifty pages worth of documents, she has the forty pages for the public record, so.
You said the magic words, no matching.
No, this is no matching.
Move to approve. Second.
First, second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And let me clarify, there is no cost to the city in this from beginning, middle, to end.
That's correct, except administrative time to put in for the money.
Thank you.
But you've got nothing else to do.
Item eight C, discuss and or take action on bill two thousand thirteen dash nineteen, ordinance number eight fourteen. An ordinance for an amendment to the city of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget.
Just where the ten thousand dollars to fix the place that comes in.
And this move to approve.
It has four accounts, ten thousand, eighty-nine, two hundred, ten thousand, wait, it's the same thing.
Correct, moving, it's from your revenues to your expense, two times.
Okay, so the ten thousand is the amendment for the building.
Correct.
And the eighty-nine two is?
School facilities tax for the donation to the school, forty dollars.
The donation for the school. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Sorry, discussion?
No, this is, this is a forty-dollar school donation.
That's two, give me two lines and you'll be right there. So, any opposed?
It was.
All those in favor, I said that already?
Yep.
Aye.
No opposed? That's for the amendment of the ten thousand for the building and the eighty-nine change for the school's donation for this year's budget. So, next. Discuss and or take action on professional service agreement, safe routes to school project, city manager Hyatt.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, this is for the safe routes to school engineering that's required by T-Dot, the consultant. This is one hundred percent reimbursable by the grants.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Discuss and or take action on strategic plan presentation from the town hall meeting. The reason I put that was for education, I know we're tearing in our hour, but I want to make a statement that the two thousand and thirteen strategic plan that was done by M-TAS by the Board of Commissioners and the staff was discussed at the town hall meeting. The discussion was open for the public, and we thank anyone that did participate, and the town halls are always open for public comment, and we wanted to talk about what the goals and the, the aspirations of the citizens in the strategic planning as we go forward and try to put something on paper which allows us to make the processes move forward of seeing the end of these projects we're talking about versus just talking about projects. So, I believe it was very beneficial, I believe that the people that showed up were educated, and it's always good to hear the comments from the public. Also, it was delivered to the Economic Task Force in, in August, and there were several comments made by many of the participants, and one of the things I wanted to highlight that we did not discuss as a commission that everyone felt was extremely important was tourism. And I'm going to make sure the board knows that the citizens, the task force, the park staff, the Chamber of Commerce, all was in unison of the tourism promoting and highlighting our crown jewel, which we put quite a bit of monies into annually, and we also have a lot of effort, advertisement and such, that tourism is a big focus on being one of our parts of our strategic plan, and also infrastructure and potential of future jobs and being the focus on broadband as we solicit for new industry in our area, so that was some of the reports. I do not think there's any action, but wanted to ask if the board had any comments on the subject?
I had something for the city manager, if it's okay. Andrew, I've, I've noticed that when I read the Sunday paper in the Williamson County section, there is always a table there that lists upcoming events, and we are never in there.
Tennessean?
Yeah, it's in, it's in the Williamson County section of Tennessean, and we are never in there. None of the stuff that we do in the park.
You'd think Nancy would help us in that area, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I, I know in my conversations with Jenny that that's, she thinks because she turns them into Nancy that they should get over to the Williamson County, but they're not.
Not that way.
Somewhere along the line, we're not getting in there, but like, like, uh, with Nature Fest coming up, and I know that's a Chamber thing, but it's still the same thing, it's happening in our park, and we're wanting people to get in here, and if tourism is really going to be that, we've got to expose ourselves, we've got to get our name where we can. It's also never in the Middle Tennessee Electric book.
We had one thing in there a couple of years ago, I actually, the last Mayfest we did, I did get that in there, but you, you, all you got to do is contact them, and I did do that.
Those two, those two things come to the house regularly, and we are never in there, and I, I don't understand that, because it's like the, we have the Fun Day coming up in September, we have Nature Fest, we have the Haunted Trails in October, we have, you know, a Christmas parade. We have all of this stuff that goes on out here, the Fourth of July, and it's never, it, it, those are documents that come to nearly everybody's house, so.
But the Flat Creek ice cream supper's in there.
But when you make a statement, all you have to do, city manager, when you make the statement, all you have to do is contact them, the statement is saying that someone is obviously not contacting them because it's not in there.
Well, I don't even know if that's all true, because I've contacted.
Who takes care of that?
Well, I know, like, on Mayfest and some other events, I would email the, like, the news channels, and not always have success on getting it in there, and so, I don't know what we're lacking. I mean, if we need a little PR section where we go to all the local news stations with the event, I don't know where we're lacking, but I know that we had better success of getting it on the calendars this last time, but I think several people had emailed, but we are, it's a missing link, so it needs to be.
Who, who in staff?
It should be on the.
Who in staff, but she's not our PR person, she's paid by someone else, so at that point, who in staff?
The point is, the stuff is getting to Nancy, so our staff member is getting it to Gannett. Now, Gannett is choosing maybe not to put it in the Williamson AM section of the Sunday paper. I don't know whether they are or not. They will take the top headline from the Fairview Observer and make sure that it gets in the paper if they want people to read it. Now, I'm not blaming Nancy. Somebody above Nancy's probably saying we're not putting it in there, but Nancy has the information.
Well, not for, like, Middle Tennessee Electric or anything like that.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just talking about.
So, my question is general, who in staff is assigned in their job description to promote Fairview? Facebook, website?
Facebook's not in there, you know, specifically, but promote Fairview would be me, and, and we do, obviously, a lot of it, but we just have to do a better job of it, is what it apparently looks like, because we do send information out, we do send emails, short of just going to people and saying, you know, can you put us in there, because I've gotten us in that, that magazine, we've been in the newspaper before. We, we, we've been in those areas, but it's just not on a consistent basement, basis. We've got Alicia, Alicia that has, you know, volunteered to help, and we're, we're moving some of those things toward her, that type of thing, Jenny does an excellent job getting that information out there and contacting people, keep, can speak to that, you know, in great detail, but I know she sends things out. We've had things on, on the radio, and Keith, what, in the last two months? We've had two different things on the radio that, and I'm not sure what the radio call letters are, but we've had them out there, but it's not going to be the station, obviously, that you listen to. But it's like WSM or somebody like that, wasn't it, Keith?
WAK.
I thought it was WSM we did some, paid some money with for. Yeah, we, we paid, had WAS, WSM do some commercials, so we're doing some of those things. It's just, just in case you doesn't see it, don't mean we didn't do it.
No, no.
And I kind of think a little fence that you, you got the same, we don't do it. Because Jenny is really doing a good job, we send things out, we fax things to people. If we can't get them to do it, I can't make them do it, but.
No, but we just, we just, I just want to make sure we're doing our part.
Absolutely, she wants me to send her every little detail about everything that goes on in these meetings, and I do, and I think it's her, up to her, and she's listening, and she's going, and this, I think she should help us a little bit, because I help her with a lot of things, and she knows that, and, and I've never talked to her about that, but I will at great length now. How Nancy, through your contacts with Tennessee, and do we get this in there?
Well, I've had a comment before.
How do you get it in there? How did the, the Chamber, barely when you were there, how, Mayor, excuse me, would get it in there? How, Patty, the people you contacted, did they cut back and say, nope, we're not doing it? No, they just didn't do it, right?
Well.
Yeah, but I think.
I've been, I've actually been over to talk about safe routes on TV before, over at Channel Four. So, there's, don't tell me, you know, there's things we are doing. When you say whose responsibility, it's mine, ob, obviously, we know the answer to that question, but we're not getting help from the people outside of Fairview.
My question wasn't directed to you ultimately, and I do agree, everything is your responsibility with staff, but my question was, who do you have identified, as you and I spoke with Delaina on length, about putting it into the newspaper that highlights, so it, we kind of show off our assets? To where is there an identified staff that is your responsibility to have them take care of it, to where someone is doing it on a weekly or monthly basis, to where? To where someone is doing it on a weekly or monthly basis, to where we don't discuss it over and over? It is a job description and it can be evaluated of whether it's done or not?
And I don't know if it'll ever be, ever be enough, you know, because there's always another radio station, another TV station we could have put it on. But Jenny does have a big responsibility there. Alicia now, as part of what she's doing and obviously me and any other staff member that, that has access to those things. Crystal puts some things on Facebook, she, she works in that area. And we do need to do a better job in several of those areas.
I believe she was just on the radio this past week, wasn't she, week two ago?
Who's that?
Jenny?
I believe, yes, sir.
Well, I do think.
Yeah, I heard. But just to go back, I'm sorry. Several years ago, I asked why we, Fairview, didn't get any publicity in the Williamson AM. And the answer to me at that time was, we don't have the large enough circulation in, in the city of Fairview and we have the Observer to cover everything. That was the answer that I got. Now, we want to go out and buy an ad there running in Williamson AM, I promise you that. But we don't get the type of, I mean, like you said, you get the place with six hundred people and it gets a big ad up there that tells them they're having ice cream supper and stuff. And I just, I would like to see them take a bigger interest in publicizing the city of Fairview. If it's our responsibility to make sure it's done, so be it. Nancy's classified as a reporter for the Williamson AM in the city of Fairview. You look down through your, see her picture every time. And if she has knowledge of it, I would like to see it. We can't make them print it, but, and he can't make them print it, I can't either. But I know most of the time when I make requests on nine fifty, they're, they've never turned me down. They're glad to get the filling spot. And, but you're right, we don't get the advertising up there on that thing. We count on the Observer. You get a death notice, they've been passed away for two weeks before you're planning about it.
I mean, that's, that's the honest truth and things were different. Because Wayne can attest to this, when he shared the seat on the commission with me, not only were we in the paper, the Williamson AM, the Tennesseean, sent a reporter to every single meeting we had. They sat right out there and took notes and then.
And after that, yeah.
And now.
He's on the park board, I believe.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, I didn't mean to leave the impression, I think it's something that we're not doing. I just don't think we're, if, if, it's, it's an issue we're going to have to address if we're going to tackle that terrorism thing.
To do better.
You know, I, I, in my experience with Jenny in the park, she goes, bends over backwards. She'll take any suggestion and, and contact and stuff like that. But as the city manager stated, that doesn't mean it gets all the way out into the paper. And that's the part of it, we've got to figure out a strategy to address if we're going to push that part of the strategic plan. Because we've, we've got to have something that's, that's appealing enough to them that they want to print it and, and, because what we're doing isn't necessarily getting us what we want.
I constantly see Spring Hill, Noliville, Brentwood, Franklin, and they're constantly seeing them in the, in the movie.
Mr. Carroll?
Well, and I do know Nancy's cap, she does press release for things in Fairview all the time. So, I mean, I don't know if it's, we need to go have lunch with somebody at the Tennesseean or, you know, what it is. And I know the city manager and Jenny, I mean, they, they try to get things out. But we are missing a market that is free to us and that's the social media. Like the Fourth of July, and I called, as soon as I asked, it was done. But we're a week out for the Fourth of July and there was nothing on Facebook. Well, we know tons of people are on Facebook all the time. So, you know, I created a page announcing the event and invited people. So that, I mean, they were just missing that, there are some things we can do for ourselves. And we need to look at, you know, I know Jenny handles all the park related. She does a great job getting the Facebook updated and the website and stuff like that. So maybe that's a place where we need to say, okay, you know, let's pick a person to be over once a week or every day. You know, this is part of your job assignment and it's just to tweet something about the city of Fairview. I mean, we're behind times if we're not doing it. I, I don't know why, why it's come to this, but this is how the world is and social media is a great part of it. And then the other suggestion I make is, let's just work on building some relationships with some of these people. If we're, because I, actually I understand, I don't know if the Commissioner of SELL remembers, but I know the first Mayfest, I emailed people personally wanting, because we had sent it out and trying to get it. Not one thing. I know you did the same thing. You emailed the newspaper or the, the news stations just like I did because we had this conversation. It did not get on, not one bit. Now, we did get the second Mayfest, a little slight bit. And I don't know how, maybe we got it added to the calendars and because it was on the calendars. So that was something I know the city staff worked on to improve the next time. But I, I think we're missing the, you know, the piece. You know, whether it's, you know, we allot a couple of hours out of somebody's schedule and that's their assignment and new task is to take this under their belt, not to say that they don't have enough to do. But maybe, you know, that's a direction we need to go.
All right, the last comment I'll make about that is the, when you talk about relationships, I totally agree. And in many, 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 many conversations with Ms. Susan Whitaker, which is the, the Commissioner of Tourism for the State of Tennessee, which I have been in her presence many times, fan-faring, and she's very aware of Fairview. She actually sent a liaison to our economic board meeting and said, "Go tell them we're all behind them. Let's get more information about Bowie Park. Let's partner together and promote it in our tourism." So that is actively going on now for the purpose of, but that's almost two years of relationship and someone shows up at our city hall going, "I'm with the tourism of State of Tennessee here to help you with Bowie Park." So those relationships are very important and to continue them are very important. Okay, unless anyone else has any dying thing to say there, we're going to move on. F, discuss and take action on update of the library expansion plan from the school facility tax fund. I'll give you a short update. We have had three committee meetings with the Williamson County Commissioners. I went to two and Commissioner Sutton attended one and those were all a favorable, positive vote for the benefit of Fairview. Working through the inter-local agreement with the Williamson County that states school usage only, that the county mayor will be writing an addendum to that inter-local agreement that will allow us to use school facility tax funds for the benefit of participating in a library expansion project with the county. The meeting left is Monday night at seven PM. At seven PM at the county office of the Board of Mayor and Aldermen's for Williamson County at West Main. The. Administra, I didn't want to say the wrong thing. Williamson County Administrative Complex, seven PM, Monday. If anyone here, any of the board or anyone in the, looking or watching on TV would like to be present to support the city of Fairview and show the county that we are all in agreeance looking forward to an expansion to our local library, we would appreciate you to be there and support the event and the future project. Any other statements from the commission? Item G, discuss and undertake action on agreement? I'm so sorry.
Uh, Mayor, has there been any further discussion about the cost factors and what's going into the cost factors?
No, and I'm glad you asked that, Ben. That's why I was trying to give you detail because the discussion that we were set forth was, does the committees and the Board of Commissioners agree that we can amend the inter-local agreement, period?
We haven't been talking about the cost.
It, it popped around in general discussion, but the point of what we've went through, the three meetings and the one, is to amend the inter-local agreement between the county and the city for the usage of the school facility saying school only. And we're asking for library and it's beginning, it's an amendment granted by the mayor.
Well, the reason I asked that question was, I think I've expressed it before. I'm not sure the calculations of fifty-fifty are a fair distribution of the cost of that. And so, so, but that's not relevant to what you're trying to get done. I, I still think we ought to do it, don't get me wrong. I just think that when we get down to the brass tacks of talking about the money, there's, there's several points that need to be taken into consideration about the, you know, the fact that our city residents pay city tax, but they also pay county tax too.
To highlight the point, they have not discussed the project nor has the, the Board of Trustees approached the county for the project. So it was a very interesting conversation when they were discussing this to give us permission to amend that we could use funds for a project that they haven't even been presented yet because it has not went that far in discussion, design, architectural bidding, anything.
They asked me several questions the other night about square footage and expansion, future expansions about it, so they still have.
And that was general questions because it had nothing to do with what we were specifically on.
Yeah, I, I just think, again, I think we have the, the fact that our city residents pay county tax too. So in essence, not only are they funding our half, they're funding their, part of their half. And I'm working on getting some numbers for us to discuss about what our economic impact is. If you go simply by property tax appraisal, it's five percent in terms of the revenue that we pay in property tax. But there's other factors, population, sales tax, that sort of thing that, that'll factor into it. I'll have that number.
That would be a discussion when we get to the point of funds.
The point being, the other, other thing that, that bothers me a little bit is I, I recall that the building, the addition to the buildings they talked about was somewhere between three and four hundred square feet.
Eight hundred is what's put on paper.
Eight hundred square feet. So they intend to go way out the back? Or are they doing remodeling inside the building?
I didn't bring that drawing, but I'd be glad to send it to you for your reference.
Okay.
And that way you can see that, but we're not there yet because if the design totally changes, the money will change with it.
And then the last part, I guess, that, that's curious to maybe you know or we don't. Does the county intend to do that with their own resources or do they intend to bid it out?
The county's not even been asked about the project yet.
But I mean, in talking to the board, I mean, are they thinking that the county, you know, if they pave their own roads, do they, do they, they have a construction team that builds these?
No, they did that.
They, they plan to build this out?
They're very well-known.
Okay. Because that would make a difference too.
All good, all good questions to come.
In trying to calculate it because we would be, we pay part of the salary of those people that they would be assigning to do this.
I understand.
So it, it, a fifty-fifty split, and I, I, as I remember, Ms. Hyatt, you can correct me. We got some data from them about the number of visitors that they had annually, but we didn't get any data that told us how many of those visitors were city residents and how many of those visitors were county residents.
I don't know that they had reference to do that. I believe they did zip code and that's why that, as far as they went.
So I, that's why I think population is very important. If you, if you.
Well, the tax records, the county has the ability to pull that on each and every person.
Not the library.
Yeah, but not, not from the library records of who came in. Yeah, but that would be a manual, if that's not electronic, that would be a manual process. And so I think the population of the area served that they look at to be serviced by that library are very important. Because I think, I think we could be even less than fifty percent of, of the area they plan to service with that library. So that would be your first cut and you put the tax in there and then the size of the building. I, I had in my mind it was four hundred square feet and, and Ms. Rollsinger was saying two hundred dollars per square foot. I, I kept coming up with eighty thousand dollars, not a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that'd be interesting to know how big a building they're going to put on there.
More, more discussion on those things to come, but at this point, the county doesn't even have a project in front of them. Where we're at is, as I stated, asking for an amendment to the inter-local agreement that says schools only. Any other burning comment? We'll move on to G, discuss and undertake action on the Dixon Water Authority Agreement on CCC Gun Range. City Manager Hyatt.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe it was last week, Mayor and I were over at Water Authority Dixon County speaking with the executive director, Mr. Mike Adams. And he brought up, we've been trying to get an agreement in place to, for our police department to use the gun range. And he said that all they need now, they're, they're ready to go, they just need a memorandum of understanding or agreement sent from us, prepared by our city attorney. So that's where we are. We need to get Larry to prepare that so we can move forward and, and see if we can't get that in place. They, they've established the property lines, they've got no problem with it. They just would like for us to put a, a gate up to, to help control who goes in and out of there and that type of thing. That way we would not have to interfere with their operation to get somebody to open the gate and it would be totally up to us to, to be able to monitor and, and, and control that.
I'd like to make a motion that this be deferred to the Safety Committee for the purpose of reevaluating the current agreement and bringing it back before the planet, I'm sorry, bringing it back before the board on the nineteenth meeting. A motion on the floor?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking for the committee to do for you.
We have a contract that they want us to revise if we want to alter stuff. There's some stuff on it that is either antiquated or not something that we would agree on.
It's not the complete revision of the contract, it's just a memo of understanding that.
No, there's parts of the agreement that in looking at it, there were things that you would not want to continue.
You're correct.
In the agreement. And as we looked at it with Mr. Adams, city manager and myself saw several things that needed to, quote, edit, eliminated or revised.
Why not eliminate the entire document, let him draw a new memorandum of understanding and go with that?
Well, you have to use your old understanding. If you have things that are agreeable, why would you start from zero when you already have a document?
I don't know that it would hurt anything. It's only for the next meeting to have the safety.
I just didn't understand what, what she was looking for.
My motion was to defer to the Safety Committee to reevaluate the current agreement and to prepare a draft for the next meeting on the nineteenth to be presented to the board.
Second.
And you, Larry, can, can somebody get us a copy of the current?
I'll send that out.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? City Manager comments?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have tonight, today in an email, I got the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation Recycling Rebate Program, which the last two years we have applied for and received the funds to purchase recycling containers for all the schools. It's a, a matching program and it's, this year, the amount is five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That seems to be a recurring amount. It seems to be pretty close to the same. But I just needed to get some direction at some point on what you would like for me to do, apply for. If we don't apply, it just goes to the county. So it would be up to you. And I think the deadline is October twenty-first at four-thirty so we can bring it back to the next meeting. And depends on what, I don't know what you want me to apply. You have to have a program or purchase something or something related to recycling, so we'd have to come up with something.
Would it pertain to ground cover?
See, I thought the same thing.
At the elementary schools, at the playgrounds, that they're busting their knees on every day?
It outlines in here that it.
That recycling material?
Recycling rebates may be used for any recycling purposes. Purpose includes establishing new programs, collection sites, preparing recovered materials for transport marketing, identifying markets for recovered materials and developing educational programs for adults and children to help them understand solid waste issues, management options and costs and the value of waste reduction and recycling.
So we'd be applying for five hundred dollars and matching five hundred some odd dollars?
Correct, five seventy, yes, ma'am.
Be a thousand dollar? Did we provide all of the schools with recycling bins?
Yes, ma'am, they've all been, all four have been provided that.
Could we ask them if they need more?
That'd probably be the best place to start.
What we did last year? Could you check on that?
And I, I know they, they've in the past said they, they, you know, that's great, but we really need more. So that might be what we need to do.
Let's see if we need to double it for a second year doing the same project.
Gotcha. I'll ask that question.
Good point.
Okay. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Got some news tonight with the, very often we have people come into fire station with little dings and they fall off a bike in the park or something and had a lady come up, had cut her finger with a knife in the kitchen and wanted a Band-Aid. I'm all set if you cut your arm off, but I can't help you with a Band-Aid. So we had gone out sometime in the past and bought a, a first aid kit and I gave her a Band-Aid. And he says, "Was your tetanus booster up?" She goes, "Well, I don't, I don't think so." She goes, well, I don't, I don't think so. Got to go to one of our two clinics, or, or to your family doctor, and let's get you get that tetanus. I says, there's one next to Sonic, it's one on the east side town. She went to the one next to Sonic, which is closed. So, uh, St. Thomas has closed them, and the reason I'm saying that is because I.
Tomorrow is their last day.
Uh, they were closed today.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were closed on Thursdays, and tomorrow's they start close. So, um, everybody that's ever gone in there, their, their medical records are in that building. So there's a sign on the door, call this number if you want your medical records. And I'm going to follow up, because I don't want those medical records left in that building for whoever occupies it next. It's not our job, but still, there's a lot of people over the years in Fairview who have gone in there. If you've ever gone in there, then, you know, they have to retain those records forever. So I'll make sure St. Thomas takes those records downtown, or destroys them. Um, but, uh, everybody out there, if you've ever gone in there and you want your records, go over there, there's a number on the door, and you can call and get your records, and then I'll, I'll be chatting with St. Thomas about securing those records, so they're not just in there.
Okay.
Thanks.
I almost fell asleep. We had 962 calls last month, uh, and this is the, the kind of good. We had 12 accidents for the month of, uh, two of them were injuries. From last year, from January to August, uh, we have dropped it 25% again. So we're dropping our accident rates, and I do know that we've had some fatalities, but total accidents have really went down, and it's the guys. I didn't think we'd get it lower than what we did last time, but we did. But it's 25%, and we've got, we took it down, it was 25% before, or 35, and we went back down 25% more. Uh, between January and August, it was 88 last year, and this year was 66. So they did very well. I'm proud of the guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other staff comments this evening? City Attorney comments?
I have nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commission, communication, Commissioner Brazil?
No, ma'am, nothing from me.
Commissioner Carol?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to my 42nd birthday party here at City Hall. Um, if y'all would have just rolled me cake, it would have been better.
I had that on there to take you to your birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Had to tell myself.
Commissioner Sutton?
Um, I appreciate everybody coming out also, full of concern, pro with the negative, all of everything. It gives, it is something that's important for us to do, and we're not, we're not always the big cities for everyone around here. So, uh, we have established our own ground rules, and we're working hard on them to be fair to everybody. Um, remember, we've got things that we can, uh, on the 12th, I believe it's on next Thursday, at 6 o'clock at the hospital, no one confirmed, they're putting on a program that, um, needs to be addressed, and it's sexting. It's something that Chad and us and our children have been involved in, not just here, but all over the place. Uh, it has happened recently here, uh, that is not why the program's set up, because it was set up before the lab's incident. I'm not going to go into that. Encourage your children to come to it, encourage your friends to come to it, encourage your other parents to come to it. And just see, there's a lot of information there that we as parents are blind to. Uh, and just looking at somebody's phone doesn't work anymore, because of a lot of things that they can do, or whatever. And I work for Sheriff, we have teams of people that do that and look at it. So I'm encouraging everybody to, to come out to the school at 6 o'clock on the 12th. You're all invited to it, and hopefully it, it, it makes us a better community, and helps our children from making a serious mistake. Um, I think that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Larry, back to the Triangle School Project. Did you say as part of your, in redrafting the changes in the PUD, that you were going to request a survey of the property where that sign was going to be located?
No, sir, it would not be necessary for, uh, uh, the PUD, I mean, to change the PUD. If they can get it, you know, all you're doing on the drawing is showing as accurate as you can get it. They can take their measurements off something and show where the sign is. What I would have had to, had a description of, I think back in May, when they asked what I would need to put it on the Beata property, and all it says, the Beata's permission and a legal description of where the sign's going to be placed. Now, since this is city property, I don't need a legal description of where it's going to be placed, but whatever, uh, Don usually get, does to locate where the sign's going to be on that PUD, uh, it needs to be shown as accurately as possible on the PUD. But I won't need a legal description, it'll just be showing, it'll, it'll change the, uh, zoning to allow the sign to be placed, uh, as shown on the drawing.
Thank you, sir.
If, if it was not owned by the city, yes, I'd have to have a description.
During public announcements, did we announce the breakfast in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, other than I was going to tell Patty happy birthday.
Thank you.
I will recap, we have the Congressman, Marsha Blackburn, tomorrow at Hickory Home at 7:30 in the morning. Public is invited. Also want to make sure you have on your calendar September 14th, 29th Annual Nature Fest, our largest draw and our most exciting thing in Bowie Nature Park, part of tourism. We have a great day, hope you can come out. And I would like to then end with, happy birthday to you.
I didn't ask for this, did I?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Patty. Happy birthday to you, and many more.
Thank you very much. I didn't ask for their attention.
Addendum?